All right, going over to you now.
Thank you. Welcome to the Groveland Board of Selectmen meeting of March ninth. It's about six oh five and select to call meeting to order. Also, we will stand and say the pledge of allegiance if you all can. Do that. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We'll do the warrants after. Jan, you're going to do the honors?
Yes, we would just like to introduce Amy Kramer, the Langley Adams Library new director, to you all. She wasn't able to come down when you voted her the position in, but she's here to meet you all and she officially starts on Monday. So, we're really excited to have Amy coming into the library.
I'm excited. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in on this nice night.
Yes, it is a nice night.
Actually, that's right.
It's a good day, isn't it?
It's a good day.
Okay, so you start Monday?
I start the sixteenth, Monday the sixteenth, another week, but I'm really looking forward to it and we've just had a really good meeting and I don't know, I'm eager to start.
Wonderful. We're eager to have you here too. You're good people.
Yeah, no, meeting all the trustees.
Board of trustees and all your employees.
Right.
It is a good, really good, good thing. Good to go forward.
Can you tell us a little bit about the process? How many candidates did you have? Maybe my colleagues already asked you those questions.
That's a good question.
We had quite a few, let's see, for this round. Denise, remind me, three or four?
We did it in stages, the interviews. So, we interviewed seven or eight people, including Amy, and have narrowed it down throughout the process. So, as the, we had a search committee.
Of five.
Of five, that we decided that to put Amy's name forward.
Right.
So, we did have a lot of interest. We actually received quite a few more resumes, but we chose the.
The most qualified, the ones that had public library experience.
The best of the best.
The best of the best and this is, Amy's here with us and we're so excited.
Yeah, no, it's really nice.
And we've been without a library director almost a year, which, you know, is.
In that long?
Yes.
It feels sometimes longer, but if you look at the higher rate of, throughout Massachusetts, we are actually in a pretty good amount of time to read higher because it's a very small pool of people that actually have the public library experience and have the director qualifications. So, we're very happy to have Amy join us.
Right, and if you remember Amy's resume, she had a, you know, many different experiences in many different positions. So, that's what we thought would benefit our library the best, you know, being able to service, you know, at many different levels.
Great fit.
Yes.
Yeah, I feel good about it, so I am.
As do we.
Yes, we do.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Good to see you.
Yeah.
Can I just have Beth, can you just introduce yourselves? We have someone taking our minutes remotely, so if you could just say your names entirely.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry. Jennifer Close, I'm the vice chair of the Board of Trustees and the chair of the Director's Search Committee.
Amy Kramer, I'm the director of the Langley Adams Library.
Yes.
And Elizabeth Burton, Chair of the Board of Trustees of the Library.
Thank you.
Hey, where do you live?
Right now, I live in Stoddard, New Hampshire.
How far away are you so?
Far.
How far away?
Oh, it's about an hour and a half.
Are you relocating?
Yes, yeah.
Wonderful.
And I'm just, have to be able to transition.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm working part-time for a couple of weeks and then kind of ease into it. But, yeah, no, I'm definitely looking forward to it.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work.
Thank you so much. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Bye.
Bye.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. We'll jump over the warrants, right?
Sure, we can do that.
Well, we have some time before.
Well, six twenty and we'll give people a little time, Doctor, okay, to get here. And our Deputy Gillen is here from our PD and Heather Riley from our PD and Heather's working on work that you're doing and maybe a couple more people will join us.
So, we have, I think we're waiting for one of, one or both of the Cemetery Commissioners for a six fifteen appointment.
Okay.
So, I don't know if you want to take the warrants while we're waiting.
Why don't we do that?
Minutes for them.
The payroll warrant, would somebody like to read the payroll warrant?
Sure, I'll go ahead and do those.
Do you do that?
I'll do those, sure. Payroll warrant number fifteen dash thirty-seven for a total of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-six and ninety-eight cents. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have seen payroll.
Extention on that?
Yes. All in favor? That passes.
Okay. Deduct warrant number fifteen dash thirty-five A for a total of twenty-nine thousand and sixty-nine and seven cents. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
And the last one is bill warrant number fifteen dash thirty-seven for a total of one million, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand and forty-three and sixteen cents. Do I have a second?
Sustained.
Bill, you're abstaining on this and I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, Joe and Betty voted on that.
All right.
And Bill.
Great.
Okay, thank you for doing that. And we have, almost at six fifteen, shall we wait for anybody else that might join us from the Cemetery Commission?
Do you know if Vern's planning to come or is?
Don't think he's planning.
Okay. It's up to you.
We're appointing one?
Yes.
Balance of the, until spring?
Correct. So, as a result of the vacancy on the Cemetery Commission, the two remaining commissioners had two candidates that were brought before them that expressed interest. They could not come to an agreement on which candidate they would like to put forward. It then turns over to this group. In your packet, you have a letter from each of the candidates and so the appointment is only until the May election, so it is only a two-month appointment and then any of the candidates or anyone can run for the vacancy.
And there's one seat office.
There is two seats coming up. You're appointing one, but then there is a, one of the commissioners is up this year. So, there are two, there will be two spots filled at the election.
So, Bob would be the only person on the Cemetery Commission, correct? During this?
No, Vern is still on the commission.
Oh, he's still on? Is he running?
He is, to my knowledge, he is running.
Okay, very good.
Bob Guptill?
Bob Guptill is not.
No, Vern.
Oh, Vern, oh Vern.
Vern, yeah.
I see John and Debbie.
Yes, so you have two candidates. I know Bob Guptill wanted to come and discuss it. I see Debbie Stewart who's here, she is one of the candidates that expressed interest. So, if you'd like to take the appointment and discuss it.
Do you think we have to wait any longer? Do you think John McCormsky might be coming in? Does anybody know? All right, we have two candidates for one position at the Cemetery. That position was Dick Shaka's position and Dick recently passed away. Deborah has expressed interest in being on this committee and she's given us a letter of all her experience and reasons that she would like to do this. You know that she's a faithful visitor over there and I got a call from John McCormsky and he had spoken with Vern Cotton and he just called me and I said, "All you have to do is send us something like this and express your interest to serve." And so, usually, we have to drag people off the street and now we have two people that are interested, which is very good.
I have also, I'm also take, have taken out papers to be on the ballot.
You're going to run?
Yes, I am. I am going to run, so.
Well, this is a nice trend.
This is. I like the fact that Deborah has taken out papers. That's a good thing, it shows that she's.
And also, I'd like to put to rest that, yes, I am a Groveland resident.
And that's what I have to ask everybody because Denise urged me to. Somebody's taking our minutes by, from a remote location, is that correct? So, we have to say who we are and where we live.
Deborah Stewart, nine Rollins Street, and I still do live there.
All right, do I have a motion from either of my colleagues who we'd like to put on the board to fill out the remainder of Dick Shaka's term?
I'll make a motion.
Do you want to nominate somebody?
I would make a motion to nominate Deborah A. Stewart of nine Rollins Street, Groveland. And my reasoning is that she's here in front of us, she's been here before us, she seems very passionate about the cemetery and I think she's done her due diligence and I think that she should be nominated.
And do I have a second for Deborah?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Want to have a discussion?
Okay, certainly. I always forget the discussion show.
That's okay.
And you love the discussion.
Oh, I love it.
I love it. I guess for all the same reasons, Deborah has been totally invested in.
Your opinion?
In my, in my opinion. And working over there, helping whenever she can. I know I've unfortunately had to attend a few funerals lately and people that own funeral homes always talk about Deborah Stewart and how much she cares about Riverview Cemetery. So, at this point, I would agree with my colleagues.
I would default to agreeing with my colleagues. You've spoken very passionately about your love for the cemetery and your family's history there goes back decades and I think you'll take a very personal approach to the position, which is not unlike the approach that has been taken by Dick Shaka and the other gentlemen that have been on the committee. They really care about the cemetery and I think that's important that we maintain that element. I'm also delighted that John has expressed interest. I am relieved that there are two seats that have to be elected and I'm hoping no one else comes out because I think John will add not only compassion, but also bring in a business perspective and how to manage some aspects of the Cemetery Commission as a business. We kind of tend to forget that there is a money flow there, that there are costs and there are challenges and insurance issues. So, I think the two of you will make, you know, a great partnership. So, I'm thrilled to see you come in now and I'm hoping to see both you and John be elected in the spring.
If I can just, I just, I don't know for sure that Vern is not rerunning, so I don't want to discount the fact that his position, he may decide to rerun as well, so.
That's true.
Shh, okay. Very good. Thank you for clearing that up.
Also, Bob Guptill is here. I don't know if you had any thoughts or feelings about it. I know that the cemetery is there to your heart.
Well, I just wanted to state why we didn't make a recommendation is that with two months to go before the election where the townspeople will decide the election, we just couldn't make a decision. If it was six months or longer and we had to work with somebody for that length of time, then it would make sense for us to make a recommendation to this board, but we decided that we just couldn't, couldn't do it really. The townspeople need to make the decision.
Right, that's good.
Good, thanks, Bob. Thank you for coming in. So, Deborah, I guess you already had.
Thank you.
Make sure you get together with Bob.
Yep.
And Vern. Denise is here to lend assistance. You know, we talked about records and clerical work that we need to get organized, so now's the time to do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, everybody.
We didn't do the vote?
Well, we just keep having discussions and don't vote on stuff. That's not good either.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you for stepping up to the plate and thank John McCormsky also because, as Joe said, he does have a lot of valuable skills and he knows about the work that needs to be done over there and will head in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, six twenty. Recently, I attended a forum on prevention of substance abuse, abuse with our youth and Dr. Michael Guedi.
Yes.
Did I say that right? Was the facilitator of that and was on a Friday night. And for a Friday night and it was cold and snow, I thought you had a good group over there, don't you?
I was happy with it.
Yeah, very good. And that was in February.
Thank you for coming.
Excuse me?
Thank you for coming.
Oh, you're welcome. I'm glad I was there. I had been reading about this, I think it seems like everybody started talking about abuse of opiates and young people and heroin and Narcan and what can we do about it? And sometimes we live in a little town, we think we're immune and we're not. And many people have been courageous and spoken out about it and about how it impacted their families and kids have died, adults have died and God bless those people that don't want it to happen to other people and other families. So, I love the fact that you had two young men there, very young adolescents, that shared with us their addiction and how it started and where they are now and they're getting well and it was great. And Chief Shears was there and one of our police officers was there, Josh Sendoney. So, it was, it was a good night and I went with Lisa and she's seated in front of you, Lisa Dubay-Copeland.
Aye.
Who is a federal probation officer and she sees this all the time and she would point out at us, "Did you see this, Betty? It's happening in this community, that community." So, start pooling our resources and maybe we can help some people stay alive and get well. Would you like to say something this evening?
Absolutely, sure. I'm going to move my seat up here because I didn't recognize you. Yeah, so I got interested in this just over a year ago because I've heard about all the heroin deaths on the Cape, Cape Cod at the time. And that was surprising to me, I just didn't know that was going to go on. And at the time, and I still am in the Mass Medical Society and one, two committees, public health and student health. So, at Mass Medical Society, it's a very democratic organization. Of all the medical places I've been involved with, it's the best. And they take the substance abuse very seriously. We passed four resolutions last May and that's, I'm going to a meeting Wednesday and it's still on the, on the agenda. So, I've worked closely with Jeff Mulqueen. We had a meeting last summer where he wanted to bring mental health people into the schools, which is a trend, by the way. Kids don't mind getting counseled in schools as long as their friends don't know that they're being counseled. So, it's got to be done very privately and so they're working with that in the guidance department. We have a lot of mental health workers now in Northern Essex, Southern Essex, and the reason for that, I think, is that my group, Lahey Clinic, merged with Beverly Hospital, Aston Gilbert, and they had all the mental health workers. So, we brought them into the fold, so to speak. So, we have four or five mental health workers in our office. We never ever had one before and that's a trend. And that's a trend we're trying to push in the state. So, mental health is getting more recognized, people are more willing to speak out about it. In the past, you couldn't tell that you were depressed or anxious or bipolar, you couldn't say that. Now, now it's, it's becoming more onerous or less onerous, maybe, I'm not sure I get the right word there, but because everybody suffers from mental health issues, whether it be anxiety or depression or situational anxiety, OCD, I mean, go on and on and on. So, my bent is not pills. I think I've been in practice since nineteen eighty-five and I'm a DO, by the way, I'm an osteopathic physician. Doesn't make me any different. I trained at Beverly Hospital. But my focus now is less pills, more counseling, more mindfulness, more meditation. I read an article today, it was a research article from UCLA, they had a hundred subjects, fifty got meditation for three years, fifty did not, and I don't know what, if they did an MRI or PET scan, but the gray matter, the outer, the cortex of the brain increased and improved in people who meditated for three years and decreased in people who didn't. So, there's science now to back up some of this stuff and that's kind of where I'm at. We have an unofficial committee. I'm hoping Lisa's going to join our committee and you can too if you would like to. And basically, what we're trying to promote is, say we get five or ten members of our committee, I want, I want each committee member to give me one issue, their burning issue, and we'll work with that issue. I don't even care if I don't talk or if I don't bring anything up. We have a, we'll have a guest come in. He's a policeman from, he's part-time now in Raymond, Rich Labelle. Have you guys ever talked to Rich Labelle? He's given talks all over the country on substance abuse for a very long time, ten or fifteen years. So, he's just coming in to listen, basically, and, and once he hears the ideas, he can say, "Oh, yeah, they did that there or they did this here or yes, I can help you with this." And that's kind of where this committee is going to go. Once the committee's been official for six months, you can apply for federal grants through SAMZA and those grants typically quarter million dollar grants are issued to most of the big cities in Massachusetts, east and west, so Springfield, God, Brockton, Lynn, Lawrence, Lowell, most or all those communities are getting a quarter million dollars a year. And then they have to, there's got to be a committee and there are these places of interested people who say, "All right, we should spend this much money here and this much money here." You don't have to have the money, you can do stuff without the money, but it certainly would help in the school system if you could give them a grant to teach whatever it is you all decide should be taught. And our feeling is, and if you listen to the police people who have done dare in the past, you start in sixth grade and you go to twelfth grade and you offer them whatever you all decide should be offered. And so, that's kind of where I'm from. I, the other thing I would say is that I never had substance abuse go into my office except for people that were looking for Percocet and now I see these kids coming in with heroin, heroin issues, big time heroin issues. Most of them are getting better. And then there are, like you said, heroin users who are looking for the most, the strongest dose of heroin they can get to give them the biggest high they can get, even though they know that some of their friends overdosed and died, but they want that drug.
The hold it has on people, huh?
It's unbelievable. Like, I'll say really briefly, the best day you've ever had in your life, say you won the golf tournament in Groveland when you were in high school, you can, you can remember how, just how, how great you felt that day, will these people feel five to ten percent, excuse me, five to ten times greater when they do that drug? But then it's a slow process down from that point on. But you can't, you got to teach those kids early sixth grade, you've got to show them what these things do and then let them make the decision once they have, you know, an education. And that's kind of where we're hopefully going.
One thing you spoke about that evening was the mindfulness training. Does that start at a certain age because, well, how soon do we want to get to those?
Sure, that's a good question because a number of the people got up and said, "Don't start it at sixth grade, start it earlier." I don't know what age you started at, but I think you definitely started earlier. Do you guys, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, do you guys know what mindfulness is?
Well.
We try to be.
Yeah, that's right.
We don't know what it is.
So, there's mindful people and mindless people. So, the mindless person is that negative person that you just can't get out of your office, he or she is just making your day miserable and they just are not happy, blah, blah, blah. So, a mindful person is happy, not because they own a lot of money or they have the nicest house or the nicest car, but they've trained their, their mind to think about today, only today, only this meeting and not worry about what you have to do tonight at nine o'clock or what you have to do next weekend. And instead of having ten things floating around in their brain, which there's so many things floating that they can't take care of one of them, they got two things and they know that they're going to be able to take care of that. That's kind of what we're going to try to teach these kids because my parents didn't teach me and I bet you your parents didn't teach you because it wasn't really a science back then.
It is a training, isn't it?
It is a training.
To be in the moment and let everything else.
Look up Goldie Hawn. You know, I thought about this when I saw, did you guys see Saturday Night Live, the fiftieth anniversary? Did you see Chevy Chase that night? He looked horrible, right? He looked horrible. And then you look at Goldie Hawn and she doesn't look any different.
She's beautiful.
She practices mindfulness and I don't know what Chevy was doing.
She's probably had some plastic surgery.
Yeah, a lot of plastic surgery. Yeah, mindfulness is, that's the key thing because that really doesn't cost you any money. That's just something that we're supposed to learn from our parents and our teachers and you won't convert everybody. But I will tell you a quick story. A boy came in my office with his mother, he had been doing some marijuana, he's a local kid, and I said, "I'm going to try to teach you mindfulness." I said, "Do you know what that is?" And he said, "Yeah, I learned that at school in the Penticott district." So, somebody, some teacher taught him that.
My daughter, in sixth grade, they do belly breathing.
Good.
Right?
Yeah, Mr. K.
So, they have a teacher at the band now who is teaching them meditation. I don't know that they're calling it mindfulness, but that happens right in sixth grade.
That's right. What's the teacher's name?
Mr. Tholazian.
Tholazian, thank you.
Meditation, I first heard about that in school from a student, excuse me, somebody who was a student at Mermack College and years prior, I think she started at Penticott and she went to Mermack. And there was a philosophy professor who, for the first ten minutes of every single class, made the whole class meditate. And she remembered that and she got something out of it.
One of the problems with addiction is that I, I own my own business, so I have all kinds of people work for me. I find out that a lot of the doctors are too willing to prescribe a certain drug that becomes addictive.
That's correct.
You know what I'm saying? And that's, until we can change that, we're going to really keep battling this thing as well.
Yeah, the governors on that bandwagon, the former governor was on that bandwagon, doctors will lose licenses, they know they'll lose their license. A lot of the doctors who are over prescribing have started cutting back and when that Percocet, Vicodin supply was reduced, that's when the heroin came on because the drug sellers, they're just very smart people. If you can't buy the Percocet, then you give them the heroin for less money. And that, I think that the heroin got much worse when the doctors started getting pushed to prescribe less.
I also think that the state is in the process of trying to develop a database too, right?
There is a database.
Some other, it's already used, being used right now?
Yeah, so in other words, I can look up my patient's prescriptions from anywhere in the state before the patient even comes in the office and then I can, I can say no.
Are all doctors doing that now?
Well, they're supposed to. By law, they're supposed to be doing that.
When did that start?
Probably about ten months ago.
Okay.
Prescription database is available in my field as well, life insurance.
Interesting.
Almost a standard procedure now.
We have access to that system as well. It's a good investigative tool.
So, prescription drugs is definitely a gateway to worse drugs. I have no idea if it's rampant or if it's minimal, but I think we have an active problem in our region, meaning specifically the Penticott region, with kids involved in drugs. And the highest activity seems to be from the middle school. I don't have any hard data, but I have four kids go through the school system and over an eighteen-year period, you kind of get some good reliable information. Kids seem to know what's really going on. And when you have kids that are able to share things with their parents, I can create a composite sketch over four kids in eighteen years, we got a problem here. Problem is universal. We also are bracketed by Newbury Port and Haverhill and two major highways, which are literally highways for drug trafficking from southern states to Canada. So, the stuff is out there, it's readily available, it's right here in Groveland, no question about it. So, what you're suggesting is pre-incident intervention, early intervention, education and possibly post-incident intervention. That stuff costs money. Are you suggesting also that our schools are embedded with trained professionals that can deliver those services separate from guidance counselors? And if so, have you discussed with Jeff Mulqueen where the money source would be for that?
Well, as far as I know, there is no money source currently. In terms of, uh, education, I think the teachers have to get involved, it doesn't, doesn't have to be all of them. I think the health teachers absolutely have to get involved. And I think the guidance counselors in the high school, I know the head of guidance at the high school. I play tennis with her husband, and I've talked to her several times. And they wanna do more of a focus on mental health, and perhaps less a focus on which college you're gonna get into. And I think most guidance counselors and principals would tell you that they'd all like to do the same, same thing. I think there's gotta be a focus in the guidance department, and a focus in health classes. And whatever other teachers wanna get in, involved.
So your advocacy, especially if you do form a group, is to also approach the school system.
Absolutely.
Ask for those resources, because it's going to boil down to money.
Yeah.
He was there, Jeff Mulqueen was there that night, you did mention the costs.
Yeah.
I think, I think that that would be the big, the reason to apply for.
Can you identify yourself with it?
Lisa Dubay Carpenter from Groveland. I think that would be the reason to apply for a grant, is to not have to ask for significant funds from the school.
Well, the grants seem to be available for the large cities. Would they be, you think a quarter million dollars available for a sleepy little town?
Three, well, three, three towns, um.
Not a quarter million, but it would be regional, basically.
Yeah, it would be regional, I don't see us getting two hundred and fifty, but I see us getting something. I think we're gonna be well-connected by that point, and I, and I think we'll get something, just don't know how much.
That would be good, that would be great.
And it go, it goes bigger, I mean, obviously, you know, it starts with the parenting, as you probably know, right? Starts with parenting, and it also starts with today, the cellphones. And the, and if you wanna cook up some kind of a thing, you just Google it, and you can cook it up, you know? It's, it, today's society is totally changed.
Right.
And, and you must see it. It's changed, the kids today, they can get their hands on something so easy, and, you know, they don't have to work for it anymore, it's there. It's really crazy, so it's, it's, it's deep. It starts with the parents, right down to the, you know, the kids, and the, and the police, and the education, and all that, you know?
Well, community service, I think, has to be a big thing here too, because the school's promoting community service. So, for instance, I could talk to Laura Merrillman at the Mermack Senior Center, and I could say, "Laura, how many of your elderly need their driveway shoveled up next winter by a local, local kid?" And so she might give me maybe a list of forty people, and then I might go to the school and talk to the student council president, for instance, and I might say, "Which of your kids can you call if an elderly person needs their, their driveway shovel up?" But I think community service for some of these kids that aren't in sports, and aren't in activities, and have all this free time at home, and they say, "If you're at home without a parent there, you're gonna get into some kind of trouble." Community service, I would just push that really hard. There's no draft, there's no military draft anymore, so why can't we get these kids to do something other than look at their cellphone and their iPad?
Domestic B score.
I own, I own my own business, it's a landscaping business, and I can tell you, I'll run it out in the spring to try and get, you might get three today, they don't wanna work, they don't wanna work physical. You can't find a kid today that wants to work physi-, you might get one, but they just don't wanna work physical, they don't have to. And really, it's just, it's become, it's really become a big problem.
And then there might be kids who have a drug problem, who are identified, who, uh, you offer them things to do, and maybe they have to do community service.
Make them do it.
Maybe they work for you.
Right.
You know, for a period of time.
Right.
Sometimes the quote unquote is that, don't they?
I don't know.
Yeah, as part of a diversionary disposition.
Sure, right.
To require, generally, it's community service though. There probably could be accommodations made to have it be, you know, a work site. I think part of the issue too, though, is that the same population, the minute somebody gets a conviction or an arrest, if somebody's running for record, a lot of employers don't wanna hire them. So that becomes another barrier. But one thing I wanted to touch on that Dr. Mulqueen mentioned at the meeting was the view that the district has so many core responsibilities, that this is really on the periphery, and it's very difficult to kinda add this piece into what all the other responsibilities are. And although I agree with that statement, I think it's imperative that we integrate this in, because I think the costs are too high not to. And as much as the majority of the student population may not have this issue, there's enough people that are going to, and I think that we need to look at, you know, if it's even one kid, we really have to take an active role in educating them and being resources for them, particularly around the education piece. I think what we heard from the two individuals that were at the forum that you held was that there really wasn't a lot of education for them around, you know, I was just talking to a friend of mine this week, and I, have you, anybody here ever heard of DABs?
Yeah, it's synthetic, is this synthetic marijuana?
It's not synthetic, it, it's, uh, yeah, they're smoking it, but I work in the field every day with addicts, and I never heard of this. But it's here, it's around here.
Yeah.
So it's basically taking hashish oil, and it's mixing it with, um, some type of binder. I think they're using, you know, wax, or, or, or some type of polymer plastic. And then people are smoking it, and it's giving you a high of seventy to eighty percent greater than marijuana. But this is, you know, another thing that we're gonna start dealing with. And, I mean, I work with addicts every day, and I didn't know that, but this is out there. And there's new stuff coming all the time. When you talk about the synthetic marijuana, it's fairly easy to get. Synthetic marijuana is worse for your health than regular marijuana, because nobody regulates, well, nobody regulates marijuana either, but the synthetic marijuana's have ingredients in them that are toxic, and the damage that they do to your brain. But there's not a ton of education out there about what these drugs will do to people. And I think that it's incumbent on us as a community and as parents to educate people more about what's out there. And I do, when you talk about parenting, that's the role of parent, of parents, it's the whole notion of it takes a village, it's parents, it's the school, it's the community. We have that responsibility.
Jeff, what do you see in?
I'm sorry, you said your daughter was doing meditation, or your kids have experiences with meditation? Where?
I'm taking a mindfulness class, I, I, I agree a hundred percent. You're gonna see in the next five to ten years, insurance companies are gonna pay for mindfulness. I've been told it's probably two or three years, it's evidence-based, it changes your neurology, and.
I can tell, sorry, I can tell you one thing about that too, I went to the city of Lawrence to, uh, always, I'm not gonna use names, Family Services of, of Mermack Valley. And I had, not in my hand, but I had a twenty-five thousand dollar grant that we could have, we could get for them through Mass Medical Society, um, the spouse organization, auxiliary organization. And I, I mentioned the word mindfulness, and there was Lori Howe and this other gal, I can't remember her name. And as soon as I said that word, they were like, bang, it just like hit 'em. And now they've got this ten-page, um, application where they're gonna teach mindfulness in the entire city of Lawrence, from grades whatever, six to twelve. That, that's a, that's a big deal right now.
Huge.
It's huge. I think it's actually probably the number one. And it's not just around addiction, it's around everything.
Like?
AIDS, cancer, they've been doing this for, for years, teaching mindfulness to all these people who are chronically suffering from various diseases.
Not only mindfulness, they do weight, they do everything.
Oh, yeah.
There's a place in West Newbury that I take care of, and it's a, it's a meditation center. And it opened three years ago, and we did a lot of the contract work on it. Now, they're thinking they're gonna have to do an addition. That's how fast it took off, it, it took off like rocket fire, and it's really, really big. And then they have three classes a week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and sometimes Sunday, but it's really, really taken off.
Any kids?
I don't know, to be honest with you, I know it's more of an older group, for older, right now.
There was a show of medicals operating for kids, 'cause after we talked, I went and did some researching, actually signing a card up, they start at eleven. So age? The one in Danbury, is it? That's part of.
A middle street, it's called the Newbury Port. Insight Meditation Center.
Okay. Jeff, have you had lots of experiences lately with what's going on out there?
Yeah, well.
Just introduce yourselves.
I'm sorry, I'm Jeff Gillen from the Groveland Police.
I'm Heather Riley, an officer of the Groveland Police as well.
I appreciate you coming to Groveland, 'cause, uh, this is certainly something we all need help with. And, um, it is here, as you said, Joe, we had a heroin overdose about three weeks ago in Groveland. And that young man ended up in the hospital, and maybe about two weeks ago, a young man died from a heroin overdose in Georgetown. Last year, Havil had twenty-two deaths, so it's all around us. Knowing this was coming, we, we are trying to be on the front line as much as we can. What we did recently, we took Josh Sendoni, who was at your talk the other night, and now we appointed him as the School Resource Officer, and I've given him a task to find a class. And I'm glad to hear you talk about education, because, and me personally, I'm thinking that we should hit the kids younger. And not so much, I don't know what's appropriate and not appropriate to talk about, but it may be not heroin at a younger age, but the, the, the idea of saying no, you know, back to the old DAB programs, and, um, self-esteem, and other things that might, uh, help save them as they get older. So, that's something I'm really believing in, is, um, deal with the kids at a younger age. And then with Heather, I looked for somebody that had an interest to help people in this area. And, uh, Heather had a great interest, so she went a while back to Narcan Training to train the trainer. And I have the policy on my desk that I'm still working on, she can explain a little bit about the procedure to get that to Groveland. There is an expense that we have to deal with. So, it, it is around us. There is a, this one thing I wanna mention about a bill that's coming up, that if we try to get our local reps to support, it's, um, House Docket, uh, seven sixty-six, it's an act relative to police, um, as far as protective custody. Right now, under one, one-eleven B, police can only take somebody into custody for alcohol-related incidents if it, if they're incapacitated, or danger to themselves or others. There's never been anything that gives the police authority to deal with somebody who's under the influence of drugs. So this is a real important bill, because it's really focused on, um, I think heroin more than anything, because they talk about in the bill, um, with the Narcan, you can give somebody Narcan, bring them back to life, literally, and nine minutes later, they could relapse. And a lot of people, when you give Narcan, they'll either run from the scene, or they just won't go to the hospital, and you can't do anything. And what an awful way to leave somebody, so this bill would give us the authority to say, "No, you have to go to the hospital, you have to be checked out further, and, and be okay." So, that's something I really believe in too, so, um, that's going in the right direction also.
I'll make a suggestion, maybe you can send that to Betty, to, uh, to Denise, and maybe we can look at it, and formulate a letter, and send it to our legislative team.
Absolutely.
We could, we could.
Pen a letter, and say, you guys ought to think about this.
I have a list to go to our legislators.
You do have a list for us to support, House Bill?
Right, yeah, if you wanna.
That'd be great.
Heather also has a letter that maybe we just, I don't know, it would be appropriate to read or just leave here, for a parent in Groveland who has a son that's addicted to heroin, and he's, uh, he's been saved by Narcan, I believe.
He has overdosed on multiple occasions, and she was just, um, expressing her concern about us not carrying the Narcan, and several other towns surrounding us do. Right now, Trinity, which is our ambulance service that we use, are the ones carrying it. Yet, we are the first responders. So, there is that timeframe that we could possibly be saving lives. Our fire department does not carry it, neither do we. There is a cost associated with it. Previously, it was about forty dollars a dose, and now it's up to about sixty dollars a dose. Yes.
And DPH doesn't pay for any of that?
No, no. But if that's what it costs to save a life, I've, I've seen it work here in the small town of Groveland that we live in. It does happen, and I have seen it work. Within one to three minutes, they were up, and act, they were as if nothing had ever happened, they didn't know what was going on, they didn't wanna go to the hospital, they, they were like back to normal, and trying to deny, basically, that they had just overdosed.
Does it have a shelf life?
It does, it has a twelve-month shelf life from the date it's given. The expiration date is at least twelve months from the date that we would receive it, but it does have a shelf life up to eighteen months.
So Heather, you're already a trainer, and?
Yes.
If, if the town were to, um, approve.
Correct.
And if everything was in place to be able to do that, you would be able to train your officers?
I'd be able to train the whole department.
Okay. And then, my understanding is, what are the barriers? So, at this point, other than your training officers and the cost of Narcan, are there any other barriers to?
We would have to get someone to represent us in order for us to be able to carry it. And there's also a three hundred dollar fee from the state in order for us to be able to carry it as well. We have to basically just get someone, um.
Wouldn't you say someone to represent you?
It would be like a hospital, or, um, Trinity could possibly like sponsor us, basically, in order to, to carry it.
That's something we can look into, huh?
Yeah.
I mean, if, if, you want that.
Yeah, no, I, we, we really do want it, 'cause again, there's, Heather said first responders, we can get there and administer this, and we can really. What a great way to save a life with, with something that simple. And I don't think that, we're always conscious of money and spending, so we do wanna recognize that, but it's hard to put a price tag on something that could save a life, and it, so I think we could make it happen somehow. And I know I can talk and work with Denise, and maybe the finance committee, it's, it's not outrageous. The thing is, we would have to have, you need at least two, um, two, what do you call them, cylinders for each patient, at least.
Two doses.
Sometimes doses, it doesn't work sometimes the first time, so you.
You may have to administer a second.
How do you administer that?
It's nasal, they, they have two different versions of it, but the first responders are using the nasal version of it, and it's a syringe, it, it, it's almost like a nasal spray. It comes in a syringe, and it's administered up, up the nasal cavity.
But the cost isn't thousands of thousands of dollars, it's probably hundreds of dollars.
It's small.
Right.
Methuen bought two hundred and forty doses recently, and I guess if you do volume buying, you get a discount, they paid twenty bucks. And that, some of those, uh, could have been short-dated, meaning that they've been manufactured a while ago, and so they only have like a short shelf life. So a shelf life of twelve months to eighteen months is, just recently manufactured, it's gonna be top dollar.
Yeah.
So obviously, you folks would have to advise the town, what inventory are we carrying? Are we carrying ten doses, fifteen, twenty? Is there a minimum to gain access? So those are things that could be worked out, but I agree with Bill, it, it doesn't seem.
Could they partner with a nearby community to purchase?
Yeah, we could easily possibly regionalize this with the other police force. Because if anything, I'd like to have, if anything, I mean, God forbid, if anything happens, it could happen anywhere, but I, I just, you know, the crystal ball says there's, there's some risk of an incident occurring at the school during school season.
Yeah.
The frustrating, the frustrating part of it is, and you, I'm sure you, as police officers, have to set your side, set yourself aside, as you administer them, they get up, they run away from you.
Yes.
You know what I mean? And you might see them again thirty days later. That's the frustrating part of it.
Thirty minutes later.
But, again, you can't let the person sit there and die, so, you know?
Yeah.
Too bad there was some, at that point, there's some way, say you gotta bring them in, we gotta get them educated, we gotta, you know?
That's, that's with this House Bill, that's what I'm starting, that's what's nice.
Yeah.
That would be great, again, to a diversion program, or probation, maybe they could, you know, make them complete a program, or.
Education starts then, is what I'm saying.
I, I would like to hear the letter, but I, a couple of more items I wanna share with you. I do like the enforcement value to having Narcan, because once you identify that there's a problem somewhere, you're saving someone's life, you also now have a file established that there's some activity going on there that should not be going on. So I think that that's important. Do you guys compile, um, statistics, whether you can share them publicly or not, in terms of what's going on with drug, uh, activity in the, in our, in our town specifically?
Yeah, we would have, have access to any of the stats, you know, through our computer system.
'Cause I know that I've been approached by individuals concerned at specific locations that there's potential drug activity going on. And I've, of course, I've encouraged them to reach out to you, to the department, and investigate it.
It's just, it's difficult for us to commit, uh, some of our limited resources to sit on a house for it. Really, when you think of the cities that do drug work, they have a whole staff of people that, with the undercover operations and.
A drug unit.
Yeah, actual drug unit, right, that, that would address this. So, I, I think we do okay, but, um, to fight this epidemic, it's, it's really resources and, and money, and, um.
Well, one of the lowest-cost resources is really built on volunteerism, and that's aspects of community policing. So, for example, could we envision that the town becomes a, uh, what is that program? Crime Watch, for example? That's something that may be explored. And sometimes you can shift some of the burden and the cost by making people aware and being trained to some degree as to how to report suspicious activity, for example.
It's a great idea. I did bring that program to Groveland years ago, and, um, it's, it's hard to keep the interest, because luckily, it's a good feeling, not a problem, but there's not a lot to keep people interested, because we do have a very nice community that we live in. Last year, we had a suspicious vehicle, the officer got the call, went up, he got a good neighbor, and there was a young man actually shooting up heroin, right in the middle of it. So, um, there's nothing better than residents, neighbors, the, the community, that's really the eyes and ears that help us.
Yeah, if you, if people can be trained, 'cause I was involved in a program in Everett many years ago when I lived there, and I remember getting specific training, and it just made me very aware of, not just drug dealing, just, you know, other things going on.
We wanna be part of the solution, and our officers are, are just wonderful with, with taking on new responsibilities like this. And I compare this to like carrying the defibrillators, and I, another lifesaving tool that just, you know, makes a difference. And this would be, um, something we present to the union, but I've already spoken to a couple of them, and they've embraced it, you know, and, um, I don't see anything that would stop this from coming to Groveland, even the financial part, it's not that outrageous, so.
What happened to the DAB program?
That hasn't been around in. That hasn't been around in ten years.
It's funded.
Yeah, I think it was grants, there were huge grants with that, and just like the governor's highway safety for the extra clicker ticket and all that, the money just dried up. And when that money was available, we had Sergeant McDonald's in there basically full-time. So we're going to, we're bringing something back, maybe if there is money, but we're going to make it work somehow, at least get an officer in there. And I don't know what the program's going to be, because the times change so much, what's appropriate, what AIDS group do you talk about heroin, or maybe you don't talk about heroin to their older?
If you go to SAMSHA online, they can give you all those guidelines.
What is it called?
S.A.M.S.H.A. It's, you know what it's named for?
Yeah, it's S.A.M.H.S.A., so it's Substance Abuse and Mental Health Administration. They're under the National Institute of Health, which is Health and Human Services, and SAMSHA gives those big grants that I was talking about. And that's, I've been looking at those for a very long time, and I'm just waiting to pounce on one of those things, but I need a committee to do that.
They have all the guidelines too, and did it cost anything to get that literature?
Nothing, no, you just go.
So you can even get a ton of literature from that. And I would propose that there also be a focus on the marijuana issue, because we're not really talking about that, but I think that's at the core of a lot of this.
That's what a lot of it starts with.
That's where it starts from.
Yeah.
Because people want to talk about marijuana being harmless, and that's just so inaccurate. It's physically addictive, it's got a lot, it's harmful, and people are under the misconception that there's nothing wrong with marijuana use, and that couldn't be further from the truth.
I think that night that we sat with you, somebody said, oh, it's only marijuana.
Right, and the mother got very.
One mother was very adamant, don't say that.
That's what I was trying to do.
I've always thought it was a gateway to so many other things.
Jeff, you were, oh, go ahead.
I don't know if this is important to you guys, but I know that police departments that raid homes and get the drugs and the money, the cash. I've been told, I've read that that police department can keep that cash, and what they typically do with it is they use it for education, the police officers, you know, whatever you guys go to. But if that's actually true, and you do make these raids, and you have all this extra cash, that might be money that you can.
Yeah.
You don't have those big hits.
Yeah. Sorry.
That is true, though, we have got some funding, but it's on such a small level that it's, but we'll take anything we can get, you know.
And the other thing is, in Merrimack, Eric Shears, the police chief, said that their ambulances are giving out Narcan.
Correct.
So you may be able to work out some deal to buy some Narcan with them.
Yeah, because we do a contract with them, maybe they would support.
Jeff, you were talking about the crime watch like Joe was talking about, I used to live up on Khalida, and we used to have a crime watch little plate they put on a telephone pole.
I did that, yeah, that was years ago.
Yeah, yeah, I remember it, well, I can remember one night, you said, some people up in the neighborhood messing around, but none of the neighbors want to go call the police and rat them out, you know what I'm saying? So that, it's like, oh, I'm not going to call them, you know, I don't want to be the rat, you know what I'm saying? So that whole thing kind of backfired, because people didn't want to turn people in, you know, and so that kind of slowed that all down as well, you know what I'm saying?
No, it's because it's a tight neighborhood, you know your neighbors and.
Right, right. So in a city, something might be different, but in a little community like this, I think it makes that hard, you know.
It was successful for a while, it wasn't just, I had other responsibilities later, nobody picked it up, and we just, you know, I did like a bike rodeo in the neighborhood just to try to keep interest. But there's not a lot of crime, again, I'm happy to say that, but that's what kind of keeps it going is events, so.
Well, you know, we don't have a lot of fires either, but unfortunately, one day, one day at some point, right, we might have that terrible fire, and it's the same thing, we don't have much crime. But like you said, what happened three weeks ago was a really, I'm expecting that some people are absolutely shocked about that, that here we are, a little old sleepy Groveland, we have a heroin overdose. That has got to be shocking to some people. If that doesn't turn on some lights, then nothing else will.
But going back to those statistics, I actually think it would be helpful for people in the community to have a better sense of what's going on. I think, you know, obviously, you protect confidentiality, but I'm assuming that you do some reporting of drug-related incidents, that's public information, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I think it'd be helpful to have that information.
Right, right, yes, what you're saying is, don't say names, but say something happened in Groveland, so it's out in the awareness of the people in Groveland that it is a sleepy town, and we do have these problems, and put them out in the forefront. Because I know in the past, I know Groveland does not want to be that, they don't want to be the one that has to be having the drug problem, they want to be the perfect town.
And there is no perfect town.
Right, right, and I agree with you saying, sometimes, you know, not pointing names, but get it out there that we do have these problems, and, you know, and it would help, for sure.
There's restrictions on what we can give out, though, even, and it seems to be getting worse, as far as I'm concerned. Like now, we can't talk about domestic incidents anymore anywhere, but so Groveland, there's a problem everywhere that people should be aware of.
Yeah.
You know, domestic violence, and we can't put that in the paper, so you won't see any more arrests, you won't put anything, even, we can't even put the street or anything, because somebody might be able to figure it out and say, there was a police car there last week, and I heard there was a domestic on, you know, Main Street. And now it's also true, which I think is more, it's kind of a sensitive issue, and I kind of agree with this, but people with handicap issues or mental illness, if we go to their homes, we can't put that in our daily logs anymore. That's redacted from the public logs, and that's all.
But I'm thinking, does Groveland Police have a Facebook page?
We have a Twitter account.
We just did a Twitter, and we just did a new homepage or.
Could it be helpful just to have something like, these are the number of traffic stops, this is the number of incidents where there were drugs involved, or these are the number of calls that we've had where drugs have been involved.
Yeah, and you do see that, so that might be good to do.
That's pretty general information, but I think it speaks to the fact that it's happening here.
Yeah.
I think, you know, although people might not want to acknowledge that, I think it's important that people understand that.
The town report usually has.
Yeah, and actually, I've asked Sergeant McDonald, he's compiling the stats for me, I've asked him for quarterly to present to the board for police and fire stats, so that we can start making those more public. So he's working on compiling the twenty fifteen stats for me.
There's a gentleman by the name of Michael Labella, he writes for the Harvard, and he writes for Lawrence, and so he's a patient of mine, so I know him pretty well, and we talk about the subject quite a lot. And I was really proud of him, because about maybe eight months ago, he wrote a half-page article about a meth lab on Winter Street, it was in an apartment complex. And if that lab had blown up, the apartment complex, would have, you would have seen that fire like you were just mentioning. And I just gave him a lot of credit for writing that up and letting people know that it's in their backyard, so. But anyways, I guess my point was, if you need a writer, Michael Labella, I would highly recommend, he's not afraid.
Yeah.
You had a, want to share a letter with us?
Sure. One of our town residents couldn't make the meeting tonight, she had another meeting, actually regarding drugs, to attend in Salem. But she writes, I am writing this letter in support of Groveland Police Officers Carrying Narcan. My son has overdosed twice, and both times Groveland Police were the first to arrive at my home. As they did not have Narcan, my son was not administered it until other personnel arrived. I do not know how much time elapsed between the arrival of the officers and the administration of the Narcan, but every minute is crucial. Narcan saves lives, it does not have any known negative side effects if used when opiates are not in someone's system. It's easy to administer, I was trained in Narcan in less than ten minutes. The kits were provided at an October twenty fourteen training, and have an expiration date of May two thousand and sixteen. I am uncertain when this particular batch was manufactured, but based on the timeframe, Narcan has a minimum shelf life of seventeen months. I include this information as a financial concern, will likely be a part of your decision. In any event, please consider that a dollar amount cannot be assigned to the value of a life. I am strongly urging that our police officers, who typically respond first, have access to Narcan. Heroin overdoses in particular have risen to epidemic proportions, and this disease of addiction knows no boundaries in terms of age, race, gender, or socioeconomic status. Please feel free to contact me with any questions or for more information on my experience, and she left her name and phone number for you people.
Thank you for reading that.
Important, thank you.
Well, I think this is a good beginning for the town of Groveland, don't you, Doctor?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
A month or so, maybe we should tap into some Trinity, maybe they can provide some resources for us. I mean, they're good neighbors to us, and their ambulance service, the contract is a great contract that they have with the town of Groveland.
Yeah. Well, I think we do have to work out with the union, I know most communities, it is a change in work environment, and the unions are requesting to bargain. I don't know if our union feels that way, but we do need to deal with the union matter, see if the police officers are going to carry it, if it's something that needs to be negotiated and compensated for. And then we can certainly reach out to Trinity and see what, if they can do anything, or provide them for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
So let us know.
Yes, thank you.
Doctor, your office is in Merrimack, right?
It is.
Just for a note taker.
Yeah, Leahy, Merrimack. Our next meeting is on the twentieth, Merrimack, Livery, six thirty to seven thirty, and I certainly hope you come, Betty, because we'd love to have you on our committee. And you guys are more than welcome, I'm going to include West Newbury, Groveland, and Merrimack because of the school system, and appreciate the time to speak.
Twentieth of this month?
Twentieth of this month, yeah, Friday, Friday, six thirty, yeah, and I'll bring refreshments this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, everyone, for coming in. Thanks for staying.
Thank you.
That's informative, very informative.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. Good.
Betty, may I just fly in back, just so I can get a seat, I'm just going to start writing my study.
Right now.
Thank you for volunteering.
Not a problem.
That was informative, serious, but important that information gets out to the community.
Okay, yeah, while you went, thank you for going on.
Finance comes in if they want to sit up here, I have chairs there, and I have some here if they want to sit up.
Is that our next group?
Yes.
How many have started?
Six. So there's four chairs there, and I have two boards and chairs here.
I remember years ago, people were so worried about drugs, years and years ago, and it was a huge meeting at the Shanahan School, remember the Shanahan School, Bill?
Was that in the seventies?
No.
Yeah, the school was up until.
Give her that reminder, please.
Betty.
Keep that in front of you.
You know the thing that, you know the thing that.
I remember the seventies, we had, when I was in Middle Street, we had drug awareness training, and it was pretty intense back then, in some ways, some things have changed.
It just wanes, doesn't it, to places like this.
The Merrimack Valley Hospital, that is mainly, that is mainly now a drug.
Is it, they're just transitioning people from there to other hospitals or Narcan?
Right, right, that's one of their main things, and the thing, the thing is, so many people are going there, and they just seek drugs, you know what I mean? Are they going there, they just, they go in there, and they say this, that, and the other thing, and they try to seek drugs, it's just, it's so, it's so involved, and I believe it starts with kids, and they just start young, and they don't have enough brains, and it gets off on the wrong foot.
Because they're very small, and they know what's going on.
Finance Committee can sit right up here at the table, come on up.
Oh, you sit at the table?
Come on, Andy.
Let's sit up to the front, so we.
Everyone here wrote the other, uh, meeting.
No, Mike's presenting to the finance and the selectmen, he's presenting the recommendations.
We have somebody doing our minutes via YouTube? So when you speak, would you just give your name and address and the committee you're serving on, so she can get everything on record for us? Mike, you're going to be the speaker, are the people joining you? No?
I don't think so.
And I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Oh, I'm Amanda Cook, I'm his daughter, Bill Cook's daughter.
His daughter, his daughter.
She's a monitoring, uh, government to report back to her college.
She is, is she good? Are you going to get credit for this?
What's that?
Are you going to get credit for this meeting?
Yeah, yeah, politics.
Is it?
Now I know who you are.
Is it for politi, is it for politics or psychology class?
Politics, that's good.
Yes.
Get credit for that, too.
It's a case study. Anybody else coming, Bill?
I thought so, we had one victim to the flu.
Uh-huh.
Michelle O'Keefe wasn't going to be making it, so.
Who was? Can you tell us who's on the finance committee, so I know we've had some changes?
Well, we've had a few different changes over time. I'm not going to, I don't have the list in front of me right now to get it right.
Bill O'Neill's still on there?
Bill O'Neill is still on there.
Michelle?
Denise?
You both look so great in your matching shirts. Don't you?
We're color coordinated.
Okay, Mike, whenever you're ready.
Okay.
What do you think?
Okay, so my name is Mike Dempsey, I'm representing the Community Preservation Committee this evening. And we have offered up seven warrant articles for this year's town meeting, and they are all community preservation projects. And as you know, Groveland adopted the Community Preservation Act ten years ago. Established a three percent surcharge on the local property taxes. And we are required to spend that money on three categories. We're supposed to spend ten percent of that money on community housing, open space, and historic preservation. The remaining seventy percent, we can spend on any of those three categories, plus recreation. And so this year, I'm very happy to report that we had a couple of open community meetings, we asked for input from our many stakeholders. And we got seven terrific proposals, we're very excited about them, they span all four categories, which is great. And so tonight, what I'm going to do is go article by article, I'll tell you just a little bit about it, and then if you have any questions about it, I'll do my best to answer them. I do have the proposals here, but perchance I can't answer the question, I will get back to you. Plus, I do want to mention to the public that all of these proposals, all seven of the proposals are on the town website under Community Preservation. So I advise you, before you go to town meeting, to go take a look at them in their entirety. And also, on that site is also a complete roundup of the past ten years, of all of our projects that we have funded, and the amounts, and the status of the Community Preservation Act fund in town. So that's all up to date on the town's website, so I advise you to take a look at that, particularly before town meeting. Okay, so the first, the first article that is on the warrant is for the Phase Two of a Plan for the Groveland Community Trail. If you recall, last year, we approved the first phase of the Groveland Community Trail funding for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So they did quite well, they were able to hire a contractor to help them with the planning process, and they were able to complete a ten percent plan that's just about ready for submission to the. And they were able to complete a ten percent plan that's just about ready for submission to the state. And so they're ready for Phase Two money, which will complete the twenty-five percent planning and bring us very close to the total amount that Groveland may have to lay out. And we have been asking this year for any kind of other grants that we're looking forward to, or matching funds that may be available, or that have already been pledged. And so, the kicker on this one is that we are expecting a grant of four to five million dollars to actually construct the trail once the planning is done and the state approves it. But it's a long-term process. It could take a total of eight to ten years. But that's typically what rail trails take. So that's, that's the first one. I don't know if you have any questions on, on number one.
Mike, did they spend the entire hundred and fifty thousand dollars that they had from last year? I had a contractor, they spent all of it?
I believe...
No, they're still working with the contractor. So they're still going through the phases. So he submits bills as they complete parts of the project.
But they expect to?
They expect to, yes.
Yes.
And now they're looking for another hundred and fifty thousand dollars to complete ten percent of the plan?
No, they, now, the next goal is to complete the twenty-five percent plan.
Twenty-five percent?
There, there's like these benchmarks that, so they've completed the first plan, which enables them to submit it to the state. The next plan, the state wants to see is more extensive, so that's called the twenty-five percent plan.
So when you, you're at twenty-five percent, so will this project ultimately cost six hundred thousand dollars? I mean, is it gonna be another hundred and fifty and another hundred and fifty to get to a hundred percent?
No, no.
So this is the last of the spending?
No, there, there probably will be another hundred thousand dollar request for the final portion of the plan.
Do you need the preservation?
Yes, yes.
Total expenditure, five hundred.
That's approximately, yes, yes.
Is there anything built in there for the maintenance? And I'm sure this has been asked many times, the maintenance of this trail?
Well, that's...
Do we maintain that through the years?
Sure.
With security, trimming of brush? All of the sort of things, I'm sure I've missed a few.
It's not, that won't be funded by any of this CPA money. And that also won't be funded by the state. But part of the development of the twenty-five percent plan addresses how the town plans to cover the maintenance of the trail. So whether that's through volunteer efforts, or the Highway Department doing a certain amount of, whatever it is, that will be discussed with town departments and citizens, citizen input, and then decided upon and put into the actual twenty-five percent plan.
They've, they've done trails already that have been completed. Have you guys gone and asked what the cost is to do the maintenance? They must have like a mileage, lineal foot, or something on cost, what it costs to maintain them?
I know that they have been doing a lot of work, taking a look at the trail in Danvers and how they've handled it. And most, most communities on the North Shore, I believe, do it through volunteer effort. It doesn't really require much town expenditure.
So rubbish and all that, they'd have someone go out there weekly and pick up the rubbish and all that? Volunteers would be doing it?
Yes, yes.
Is there a program like this in another community that we could connect with people and ask how it's worked out for them with all of these concerns that I have or Bill has, or anybody else?
Yes, yes, I'm sure that Mike Davis could arrange somebody to come and speak to the selectmen. I know that they're having an open, another open meeting, I think with the selectmen coming up.
Your next meeting, the twenty-third, Mike Davis, the Open Space and Trails Committee are coming here to do their presentation. They've actually sent letters out to Abotters inviting them to attend as well.
And they've been meeting with different groups. I think they were over meeting with the Whitestone Village community.
And the way that I've understood, and I've only gotten bits of piece of it, Mike, I understood that this trail is gonna be stopped at Route ninety-seven in King Street, and it hasn't been approved to go through the Light Department to Georgetown. It actually won't be connected yet, they haven't, is that just rumored?
I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know. The last meeting that I attended, they were planning, it looked like the plans started right at the Georgetown line. They, they haven't got approval yet from either National Grid, or I think it's all the, all National Grid that they have to get the approval for on the lease. But they haven't got that yet, so it's still in negotiation.
Is all the money we're spending right now, the five hundred and fifty, is that including developing that part as well?
The only part that is not going to be developed on the actual rail trail portion in Groveland is over on the Haverhill side. So this trail will end at Main Street near Estes Park there. And the portion from the other side of Main Street over to the Haverhill line, which is, I think it's about a little less than a mile, won't be, won't be covered by this plan.
This board is gonna decide whether we're gonna have favorable action or not on this article, so maybe we should take the opportunity to go deeper into the project on the twenty-third when Mike will make that presentation.
Yes.
Well, for those that can't be here on the twenty-third, I didn't know...
I won't be here.
If you had any questions as we go along.
Yeah, good point.
Just identify yourself, please.
Yes, I'm Andy Wiles, two eighty-eight Main Street, and I'm on the Finance Committee here in Groveland. So where does this trail start?
Starts at the Georgetown line, yes. Right off King Street.
And then follows that?
It ends here.
It ends here?
Right. It's an L, it comes from the Georgetown line down the railroad tracks to Estes, and then it comes down Main Street to here.
Town Hall?
Yeah, it's a town hall.
So is there any work that has to be done on that part?
Yes.
Where would that be located? I'm kinda confused, come down Main Street?
The stretch along Main Street will be a very wide path, and probably that's the area. That's the one part of the engineering which is probably the most technical and the most difficult to do.
So, you know, my memory of Main Street, is there any, just, do we need property? Do we need property owners?
That is what this engineering consulting firm is doing. I'm Bob Gupton, incident, I'm on the Open Space and Trails Committee. And it is the Open Space and Trails Committee that is sponsoring this, this article, this whole, this whole effort. So, in fact, just correct Mike, the, the firm that's doing this study is the premier rail trail company in New England. They have done multiples of these, of these trails. They're doing actually a twenty-five percent solution of design on the rail trail piece, because all of the work has been done, the hole right away has been researched, and it is free and clear from a National Grid standpoint. And it's a very straight shot. I mean, it's, as you know, it's a real bed, it's all leveled, it's very, very straightforward design. So they're gonna do a twenty-five percent solution on that piece of the design. And then it'll be, in this first contract, the ten percent from Estes down here to Town Hall.
What industry will be serviced with?
That's the TBD at this point. I suspect that certainly the Main Street portion will all be asphalt.
Other portion, I'm just unsure, and how wide is it gonna be? Is there two-way traffic with bicycles?
Yeah, it's about six feet wide, six to eight feet wide. And Mike may correct me, Mike Davis might, might correct me on that. He is the man, he knows all the details, he's the one that's been researching this. And he and, they, they've been visiting with and meeting with a lot of these other rail trails. So Georgetown is way ahead of us. Georgetown has, their leg is the, what's called the Boston Borders Trail. There's a major right-of-way rail trail coming out of Boston that'll go to the Hampshire Line. And that goes, and that ties into the Newbury Port piece. Georgetown is already getting close to their hundred percent design. And with, and they've negotiated all the leases with National Grid. And I know Mike is relying on them quite heavily for way forward and how to go about doing this. So National Grid has already agreed to do that piece through Georgetown, which comes out of Wakefield and goes down towards Byfield. That stretch is already under development. And so the piece from Georgetown center, Georgetown was a big railhead. I mean, there was multiple lines between them there. And the piece to Groveland is the piece that, you know, it's taken them ten years in Georgetown to get to where they are right now, and they're getting close to construction. And you have to get into the...
Is that rail trail, when you're on ninety-seven, hit just into Georgetown, and one pond flows into the other pond, and you're going into Georgetown, go to the left? You can see a railroad bridge that's still there?
That's the Groveland, that's the Groveland piece, that's still, actually, I guess that is Georgetown.
Beyond King Street, so?
Yeah, it is, it's right beyond King Street. Yeah, that's part of, that's not the part that they're developing, that's the part that is yet to be developed in Georgetown.
But that would be hopefully some connection to ours, is that right?
That's correct. I mean, what's, the dream is that this whole thing would connect to the Bradford Rail Trail, which is well along in development. They're gonna go to construction within the year. And that Bradford piece behind the Roma Restaurant, go from the Bradford Train Station up to the new park, which is by the Marina there, on the other side of, of the bridge. And that piece will be all paved, is the way the city of Haverhill is going. Whether or not the trail gets paved is a matter, it's, it's all part of a design process and an engineering process. Some trails are not paved, and some are never done. And a lot of it depends on what National Grid will allow it to happen to, because you still have to have the trucks, the National Grid trucks still have to go on that, on that trail to get to the, to all of the holes and so forth, which are on that, on that piece of it.
Bob, we, you, someone had just said a minute ago, the piece from Main Street to connect Haverhill isn't even in design?
No.
Do they have an estimated amount of money, what that's gonna be down the future to connect?
Well, there's a trestle there. I mean, right behind, as you know, the flood in nineteen thirty-six, seven, that big Merrimack River flood, that took out the bridge, and that was the demise of the Georgetown rail trail, rail itself. Boston Main Railroad would not rebuild that trestle when it got taken out. That's a piece that's gonna cost some money to put back.
Would that be us, or would that be?
It will be probably shared between, because that is, that is the Groveland-Haverhill line, it's right down the middle of it. So it would have to be shared between the two communities.
So over ten years, the total cost of this is five million dollars, and our out-of-pocket is about five hundred?
Yes. But that's not the piece that I just talked about?
Right, that's a shared piece, that would be additional, exactly.
Which we don't have that dollar amount?
No, but we're in very early stages of designing here, so...
But to try and give the town people the to, the whole package is all I'm trying to do. I'm not trying to come down the road five years later and say, well, we gotta connect this, it's gonna be this much more. It's only fear to the town people.
I'm a little bit in over my head from, I mean, Mike Davis should speak for Rail Trail Committee.
Right, exactly, that's what I'm suggesting.
And he should be the one that really gives you the real, the real...
People need to pay attention to when he is making the public hearings, public presentations, as he has been, and to show up at those meetings, or tune in, because the rest of us are really just not capable to bring it... The, the answers to the, to the hard questions that Betty has raised, for example, and Bill, I have some concerns that, you know, we're just not gonna get the answers tonight.
No, and some of them are design concerns. That whole stretch along Main Street is gonna have some challenges. When you think about going in front of TD Bank and all the way up there, a big, wide trail, I mean, they've got some engineering design work to do, and that's why you pay these engineers the big bucks to figure that all out, and all the grades, and all of the crossings, and all the driveways, and all that. And that's what they will have to do. But it will be a wide trail, and that's similar to what's happening on Salem Street with our, our Kaliums project out there. That's gonna be a very wide upgrade on, on ninety-seven, going to the Georgetown line there, too.
What side of Main Street is this plane going, you know? Is there any thought about which side of Main Street, on the water side, or on the...
It's probably gonna be on the water side, but you hear some waffling sometimes. Again, it's an engineering thing, they have to decide. I mean, ideally, it would go right, you know, hook right to the Groveland Bridge, and it would be on that side. And then, of course, the interest that we have in reclaiming the Getty Site and so forth, that would be another wonderful feature of this trail if it all came together. But that's would really indicate why it might be better on that side of the trail, but that decision has not been made. For instance, on, on the Main Street side going down to Shanahan Field, you'd almost have to think it would have to be on the riverside, because that's where the existing sidewalk is now. And with that, where that's one-way traffic already, I don't think that's really a big, big problem. I don't think that's gonna be a, be a hard one. But I think that the piece from Groveland Square to here, I mean, a challenge. But the, it's an engineering challenge, and that's what they do.
Several homes on both sides of that street section, or right atop the street.
I'm the Chair of the Finance Committee, I'm Bill Cook, on Tennessee Way in Groveland. The only thing, I think, what the Selectmen Dunst's looking at here is basically, we wanna know what the final cost's gonna be, we don't want surprises down the road. We don't wanna, you know what I mean? If this, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna connect into something, and then there's some bridges out, and then we're gonna replace that. I mean, if this is the, we've had a couple of projects at town that, you know, we've had the final, final, and then we've had the final. And we don't want, we don't want that. We wanna know, this is the final, this is the, it's gonna be the five million dollars we get for a grant, and this is the final five hundred thousand dollars we're putting into it. We don't want the surprises down the road that, you know, I don't know, the base of it isn't, there isn't enough base to build a bridge on, or, you know, the struc-, what the material of the land is made out of, and all that type of stuff. So that, I think that's the direction we're thinking. We don't wanna have a surprise down the road.
You're, you're asking for an article to go before the town people, and it's only fear that you give the town people the whole picture, not part of the picture. They spent five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then ultimately, part of it gets built and the other part doesn't get built, you don't, you don't connect, you don't make all the connections, you know? You're not doing justice by the town people, that's all I'm saying. I'm looking out for the town people, that's all I'm doing.
These are questions, I'm sure everybody has. Are these trails meant to be used all year long?
They can be, some towns do and some towns don't. You know, it just depends if you, if you wanted to pay to plow them. But in the wintertime, skiing and snow shoeing, cross-country skiing and snow shoeing would be the primary use, as long as they weren't plowed.
So, Phil, maybe you could leave some of your questions with us for the twenty-third, you know, when Mike comes in. I don't know if everybody can go back.
That's a great idea, we can, I'd like to read Bill's questions.
We should accept questions from people, if, if they can't be here.
And they have asked, their engineer and the, and the notice that was sent out to Abotters, they did ask for anyone who has questions to send them to the engineer so that he can be prepared and answer them on the twenty-third. Their meetings are posted on our website. They do have one April seventeenth, April thirteenth or the seventeenth, it's a Monday in April. That location is still to be determined. But the twenty-third, they are expecting a large outreach here at this meeting.
I mean, as a board, what we have to do is really make two decisions, do, is there gonna be a warrant article? And then are we gonna support it or not?
Right, but I would like to...
We can allow anything to be a warrant article and then not support it, or...
But the, but the fairest thing to do, if you wanna have a warrant article, the fairest thing to do is to put it out in front of the town people and give it to them the right way, and just don't give them a warrant article.
I don't think anybody's suggesting that we withhold any information.
You want complete information?
I want complete information.
If it's possible.
I'm not saying I'm against the project, I just want the town people to have the fair information in front of them. I've, I've known, I've gone down to Bagno School, and they've raised their hand, a hundred people raised their hand, something gets voted, and half the town people don't know what the heck they're voting on. Or what, you know, what, they, hey, how, what happened, how'd we get that? A hundred people down there and voted on it, and they passed. So it's just not fair, that's how I feel it. I mean, I'm not saying this is the way it's gonna go, I'm just saying that I like to make sure the town people get the right information, that's all.
What have we committed to so far? What is it, it's, I mean, we, we, we agreed to pay for a study? Is that we, is that we voted on at that point? Is that we, is that we voted on at that point?
Yes.
Last year, we voted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the plan, the first plan that's submitted to the state, which they call the ten percent plan. Doesn't really mean anything as far as numbers are concerned. It's, from an engineering point of view, it's a ten percent plan. That's what we have paid for thus far. This is for the twenty-five percent plan, which gets you very close to the state being happy.
And that warrant was on the town meeting last year.
Yes.
People voted for it.
Yes.
There were a series of hearings prior, and Board of Selectmen had favorable action on that warrant.
Yes.
Just to make sure that we have the record clear.
Yes.
We wanna, we wanna be, we wanna be very, everybody here tonight and involved with this project cares about the town and wants the town to be informed. So this is not a fight between people that are informed and uninformed, or people that are trying to squeeze stuff through without full information. All I'm saying is that twenty-third is the best opportunity.
Yes, for these detailed questions, you know, I apologize that I can't answer these, and, you know, some of these things.
This is a very difficult project. It's a complicated one. So for us, for the Board of Selectmen, this is a tough one, because we have to, yes, we want it as an article. But I think the tradition of the Board of Selectmen is not just allow warrants on and play Pontius Pilate and say, well, wash our hands, let the people decide. Ultimately, we wanna get behind something or not behind something. And I think the tradition of the Board of Selectmen is generally to get behind things once they understand that, and we can articulate it well to the people.
And what I was trying to say to you, Joe, I'm trying to get behind it and articulate it. That's all I'm trying to do. I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to put a wrench in this thing. I'm just trying to get, I'm not gonna be here on the twenty-third, and I'm trying to educate myself with it, and that's all.
Give us, maybe you can give Denise some questions.
I have it down. I'll take care of it.
And then Betty can ask the que, or I can, and we wanna, you know, we won't let Mike off the hook that easy, believe me.
I'm not trying to put Mike on the hook.
And I believe the Board of Selectmen works in concert with the Finance Committee. That's how I feel. I always like to hear.
Sure.
The researches and homework, what they've done, who they've talked with, what their recommendations are.
This is a little different, Bill, than the example that you brought up regarding another project that was funded in multiple phases. This one, we knew this was going in multiple phases, because this is how they're done. We, we, nobody comes in asking for five hundred thousand dollars. It's done in small portions. So they're doing it the same way that every other town does it. And so, as far as we know, you know, I mean, we can't guarantee, obviously, the state is going to fund the five million dollars. But until we do these steps, the first phase, the second phase, and then that final piece to draw the, the on-road portion and the trail together, we don't even know whether they'll fund the five million, till that's, that, in their hands.
Yes, Mike, but Mass DOT directs this whole process, this whole procedure. The ten percent plan gets presented to DOT. DOT approves all the engineering designs through the whole process to the twenty-five percent, and they're, they're on. So it's not a question of us investing five hundred thousand dollars and then finding out the state doesn't like the plan.
Right.
They are fully invested in the whole process.
But they're not gonna guarantee the five million right off the bat?
No, because there's a queuing process, too. So this whole thing, I've forgotten the acronym that it's called, but do you, it's like a, a school project, you know? You gotta get in the queue, you know, and it's the same thing here. You gotta, and there's a whole bunch of other communities ahead of us, and so forth. So the whole thing takes time to work its way through. But again, it's a, it's, it's a working relationship with the state. We're not gonna get to the end state here, and they're not gonna say, no, we're not, this is stupid. We're not gonna do this, or we don't like this, change your plans. No, they will be involved with a full review throughout the whole time.
Right, but if you looked at it as a business, me being a heckler about being business, I look at it, spending five fifty and having that possibility they may not do it, is it a good investment? That's just, that's just me. That's just how I look at it, you know? So hopefully, they would do it down the road.
Well, municipal planning unfortunately doesn't fit the mold of business in some areas, and I think this probably would be one of them.
Well, we gotta run the town like a business, unfortunately. That's how I look at it.
I understand that, though.
Okay, I'll move on to the next one, then. The next warrant is to develop a full set of plans and provide construction oversight for the construction of an affordable community housing project at the town-owned site at the corner of Main Street and River Pines Drive, which is right behind the police station. And so this is a follow-on to what was voted in twenty thirteen. In twenty thirteen, we approved a small project to hire a consultant to put together a financial pro forma and site plan for a potential community housing project. And so that was, that's been done, and the full report was received. And now the, the next thing that the Affordable Housing Committee wants to do is have full plans drawn up for the development of the project, for bidding, et cetera. So this article is asking for three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to do that, and it's brought, was brought to us by the Affordable Housing Committee. It comes under the category of community housing. And this project will enable Groveland to advance in its provision of ten percent affordable housing required by the state.
How large are the facilities, is it, you know, units?
Twenty-five, Mike?
I think it's twenty-seven units, yeah.
Twenty-seven? What did we spend in two thousand thirteen for those places?
Seventy-five thousand dollars.
So we're spending four hundred dollars. How are we gonna fund the instructions, I mean, CPA money as well?
That, no, that's a complicated process. I cannot begin to explain it. That's in the pro forma, but it's built into the, what, what they will do is basically, they'll mortgage the project, and we paid for by the rents.
There's also tax credits involved.
Yeah, there's, that's where it gets a little complicated.
Mortgage, funding, tax credits, and other so-called kickers from the state. It's a little complicated, but it's not CPA money.
Yeah.
CPA money is-
It's not other town money either. I don't believe-
This is approximately a ten million dollar project.
Right, right. The total cost is about ten million dollars.
And the seed money for it is from the CPA to get it started. And the state will be all over this, because we are in deficit, certainly, with affordable housing, our ratio. And if it's something that we can do in the next several years, it would be, again, an important and strategic and historic piece of municipal planning. But I, I would wait for those folks who put this together to explain it to us a little bit.
They will come before us and explain it before it goes on the ballot?
I've gone to three meetings, and I, I kinda get it, but it's complicated.
Will they be able to come before us, before it goes on the town ballot?
I think it's a great idea. We should request them, that they see us.
I think we should request them, because it's a lot of money, and I think they should come before us.
So just, so they did come before you a few weeks ago, when they were requesting permission for the farm day? And the Affordable Housing Plan is on our website, so people can go on there and see the plan that was done. It is under the Affordable Housing Committee.
They did make a full presentation three weeks ago.
But he made it to us, not to the town people. That's how I feel.
See, remember that what Community Preservation does, okay? Community Preservation Committee gets these proposals. We review them. We meet with all the presenters. They present it to us. And then we vote on it, and that goes to the warrants. Now, you can decide to take them off. It's typically not done. Typically, most towns, whatever the Community Preservation Committee votes, it goes directly to the town meeting. The, the selectmen approve putting in on the warrant.
But, but what, my, my argument, Mike, is, and I'm not trying to be hard, my argument is if that project was presented to be ten million dollars, and I know it may not be taxpayers' money, but don't, I believe that the taxpayer should have the chance to either have a forum if they wanted to, or, maybe Denise just said it, they can go on the website. I mean, I think they should have enough information out there. They should be able to go investigate it. They should inform themselves and have a way to inform themselves before they go vote on something. That's all I'm saying.
No, I agree with you a hundred percent. They get the chance. First of all, our meetings are all open, so they could attend those. The proposals are all on the town website. All the information that we receive from any of the proponents of these projects are all on the website. So we, there, on the website are also links to the two actual meetings where the presenters came and told us about the project. And then ultimately, at town meeting, the, again, the people are gonna have to vote. They're gonna have to approve it at town meeting. So whoever is there presenting the project is gonna have to tell everybody and answer questions in public, what, what are you doing this for?
And there were, those meetings-
Excuse me?
I just wanted to ask what Chris or Charlie-
Would you identify yourself and your address, please?
Tracy Gelford, operating the cable access.
The man behind the camera.
Just wanted to know if Charlie or Chris taped the presentations.
Yes, and there, there, there's links to them, to those two meetings on the website.
So the public to know that is-
They can access them.
I just wanna, I just wanna say one thing. Hey, Mike, I feel bad for you. You're on the firing, you got the firing squad here. You're all by yourself. And, you know, it's, it's kinda tough with hearing them questions at your left and right. But how much money does CPA currently have?
CPA currently has one point over one point seven, one point seven seven three, three four one.
I first, myself personally, and maybe I don't know the law, and I don't know anything else about it, but CPA at first I thought was a great idea. And what's happening with CPA is it's a down payment on everything, but it's never the fault of it, okay? And I, I don't have to worry about it. I'm not, I don't get elected for the Finance Committee. But the problem is, is it's a down, it's a down payment for everything. So we get into ten million dollar projects. We get into five million dollar projects. We got, we bought a bunch of open space. We got a twenty-year note on it for three point six million dollars.
That had nothing to do with CPA.
Our open space that we bought, didn't have-
Not, not the one we purchased.
Your deposit got us into CPA, into-
No, no, nothing.
Nothing?
That had nothing-
Three pieces of land, nothing happened to CPA?
No, the one you just talked about had nothing to do with CPA.
Well, there was, there's three pieces of land on Santa Street.
Yes, yes, the other two parcels, the other two parcels that we bought, we bought them, what, their purchase. We bought them with CPA money and matching funds, either from the Water Department, or the Water Department and other grants.
But what I'm saying is, we get into things, and we're using CPA money for deposits down on big projects.
In many cases, Bill, in many cases, that's the idea. CPA is supposed to be seed money to be able to do something that requires more, such as the community trail. Where would we ever come up with half a million dollars other than CPA to do the community trail?
The thing is, is if we had one point seven million dollars in CPA, why didn't we put more of that on our open space on Santa Street? And we would be looking at future debt.
Because the-
Instead of spreading it out in all different small spots all over the place. The problem we have is we splinter out, and there's so many different, right? Like I said, I feel bad. It's shoo, shoo. So you're getting hit with the firearms.
I don't mind.
But the problem is, is one point seven million dollars in the bank, we keep on buying up open space, open space, open space. And usually, it's a deposit for that open space. I'm a dreamer myself. I got a lot of dreams, but I can't afford everything I dream about. And I don't know what we can afford or can't afford. Is there a need for affordable housing in, in Groveland? I know we don't meet our ten percent rule. Is there a need for it? Who's gonna manage it? Who, I know this, that, I believe, and I might be wrong, the building's out back here, affordable housing, it's afford, it's managed, it's come through federal money. You get into all these different categories. We get a wishlist with a bunch of deposits put down that is future spending for the taxpayers of Groveland. We got a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar ladder truck we gotta get. We got a new high school up on a hill over here that got, I, I know we're gonna have to build five years from now. We can't keep on doing this. It's out of control. And that's the problem I have. And I'm gonna let you continue with your, with your thing. You look at everything. If you look at the whole package, there's a lot of future expenses we have, we're looking at. And if we keep on going down this road, that we're gonna make a wishlist, and we're gonna put three hundred thousand dollars on a ten million dollar project, we're gonna put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a five million dollar project. And we might get the money. We can't do that. We have to have definites, and we have to know what the final cost's gonna be. I had, we had some projects, not necessarily your project, that we came in and said, you know, this is the final money. Eh, this is the final money. Final, final, final money, three times down. All right, it, it's just, it, it can't continue this way. I, I just think it's, it's, it's very dangerous, and it's scary for a small town with sixty-five hundred people.
Can I just talk for a second? And Mike, I'm not trying to, like he said, I'm not trying to pick on you, the other guy.
Sure.
But what I'm saying is, is we need to, I think, the town of Groveland needs to forecast in the future. We forecast, it seems like, for today, but we need to forecast down the road. Can we afford it down the road? That's, that's one of my big things. And the other point I'll make is, I sat in a, in a meeting a few weeks ago with the selectmen in the three properties that we bought, four properties, whatever they were, there's some expenses, and I'm not, I'm not saying it's your fault, 'cause it isn't. That land took longer to close. There was more expenses. There was more insurance. There was more tax insurance. So them projects cost the town extra money, which no one even knows about yet. And it's gonna put us probably in a deficit this spending year. But those little hidden costs, and you didn't know that. I'm not blaming you. I'm not blaming you or your committee. It's just these expenses, you can't forecast them down the road, and it puts us into a deficit, and that's all I'm saying. And it's hard to do, and I understand what the Finance Board's saying. We gotta not overspend. We gotta spend what we can afford, and we need to forecast down the road and spend what we can afford. That's my point.
Mike, do you wanna continue?
Yes. I'm not quite sure, uh-
And people are passionate about this.
No, that's fine.
You know what? And everybody in town doesn't have all the information that all the people have.
Well, first of all, I would like to say that, Bill, all of this information is on the website. Every project that we have ever funded is on the website. The numbers are all on the website. How much money we've spent on every project is on that website. So I would suggest that you, your committee, look at those things. Because I, I disagree with you. I disagree with you heartily that these are just down payments, and we haven't paid, bought anything, or, or funded anything that was ever closed out. I'm sorry, that is incorrect. The, the other thing is that, yes, indeed, these are, these two projects are down payments. They're seed money towards things, but they are not, there is no plan to see that these are gonna be requesting town money to pay for them. The community trail is not gonna be requesting any money from the town.
There's no definites.
Excuse me?
I want definites. Is there definites?
No, they're, they're, they don't have any plans to do it. They do not have any plans to ask for town money.
Thousand dollars to find out about a meeting. That's the problem.
That's the problem with the state. That has nothing to do with the town of Groveland.
But I don't have to accept that.
Well, you don't, but if the town, that's why I say it-
And I'm voicing my opinion. I'm not necessarily voicing the opinion of everybody, yeah.
That's, that's why I say, Bill, it should go to town meeting, because ultimately, the people have to decide. Do the people want the Groveland Trail bad enough that they are willing to take that risk with CPA funds?
But they gotta look at the whole picture more than just CPA. They have to look at the full picture, because that's how we survive. If we don't look at the whole picture, we're gonna sink.
Right. Mike, you know what it is? We're just trying to put the dialogue out there. We're trying to have the conversation. We're not trying to pick on you. And, and like I just said a minute ago, like I just said, granted, you're saying that the money comes from other places, but it does ultimately end up costing the town. You just take the, like I just talked about, those pieces of, those land. It's costing the taxpayers at the end of the day, 'cause there was hidden expenses we have to come up with that has to go back to the taxpayers. They'll never hear about, they'll never hear about it. The selectmen will hear about it, but they won't. And that's all I'm saying, and I think that's what, Bill's saying, is we're just trying to protect the hidden cost- And that's all I'm saying, and I think that's what, what Bill's saying, is we're just trying to protect the hidden cost and the extra cost down the road. Nothing that, we're just trying to have dialogue. We're trying to make sure the town people have the dialogue. And like you said, if we go to town meeting and they decide to vote for the purchase, they did. They voted for the land. You didn't vote. They did. Your committee didn't vote. They did. But I personally think if the right dialogue was out there originally, they might have had a little better, you know, look at it. I always heard, and I'm voiceless to say this, it always gets presented as a hundred dollars. It's a hundred. It's three hundred. It's six hundred. That I think the people need the right dialogue. They need to hear the right information, and they have the right decision. If they make this decision, then we're good to go. And I'm not saying, like Joe said a minute ago, you know, I'm not trying to say that it isn't there. I just want it to be there. That's all I'm saying. I want the right dialogue. I want the right conversation. And then, then, at the end of the day, if they vote for the rail trail and they vote for ten million dollars for a housing project, that's their business. They had the right dialogue. I did my job. That's all I say.
Well, I also wanted to say, Mike, I had joined the CPC back in October, and we had, what, six meetings? So besides having items online and having some very intensive meetings with a lot of deliberations and people doing a ton of work, this information was put together, developed, and expressed openly and significantly to anybody that is willing to listen.
Right.
So now, unfortunately, if some people feel that they've missed it, they're gonna get it. If we're gonna have it on as a warrant article, the next time will be on town floor, town meeting.
Right. Yeah, so.
And we have to, and we have to, and let me also share this with you. We also have to understand what's going on here. We had this thing called a master plan ten years ago. We spent, I think, sixty thousand dollars, and we put it up on a shelf. And that's all we've done. Now, one of the articles we have here, for example, let me tell you just a little bit my feeling about municipal planning. We have an article here coming up, which you're gonna share with us in a few minutes, which is gonna be a significant expenditure of money, CPA money, for Washington Park. Let's say that we don't do this, all right? I don't have a crystal ball, but I can probably guess that if I look in a crystal ball twenty years from now, Washington Park is gonna have a chain link fence around it. It's gonna be overgrown. The asphalt will be broken, and the park will no longer be a park. So we have to understand that if we get passionate about, we are fiscal conservatives. Are we really fiscal conservatives, or are we fiscally austere, to the point where we're just shutting things down? And we're not looking at the big picture, what the quality of life in this town is gonna be if we make no commitment at all to some type of municipal planning and development. So I resent the fact when people say that we didn't know about this, or we don't know what this is. And the information's out there, put together by very capable, passionate people. And if people don't pay attention, then they are gonna get upset. So now, you need to stop paying attention. Go to the website and come to meetings. Learn about this stuff and understand what we're trying to do here. We're trying to develop our town quality of life.
That's okay, Joe. I agree with a hundred percent what you just said, but you know something? Fiscal. Let's look in the fiscal future. That's all I'm saying. And I would rather see us put money into the Washington Park rather than some of the projects we put our money into. The land that we purchased on Center Street, our kids cannot go out there and play. Our kids cannot go out there and use it for one reason. We can't even afford to shore it. So I agree with you. If you wanna put money into the Washington Park, I'm a hundred percent for that. But I, I just don't think spending three point five million for a piece of land, we can't put our kids out there, and we can't improve our quality of life. That's all I'm saying.
You're mixing things up. That has nothing to do with the use of CPA money. And let me talk one, last item I'm gonna say, Betty, I apologize. Talk about investment. Thirty-seven years ago, I invested about forty thousand dollars in a, in a catering company that I ran with my family for twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two years. I made my money over ten, fifteen times. So when I look at a three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar investment, seed money, the rest of it is gonna be picked up by other people's money. And it's the same thing with the rail trail. I'm making an investment in this town. Let's say this town decides they wanna do this. We're using other people's money. So that's, so if it's viewed as a, as a down payment, yes. But it's a down payment, not of my, the rest of it, the payment being made by me, by other people. So sometimes you have to make an investment, leverage an investment to trigger something that we could never do on ourselves. If we shut down CPA completely, we will have a chain link fence around Washington Park, and we will have a town that'll look very, very ugly twenty, thirty years from now.
Joe, can I just say something?
I think we're gonna have to move on, Bill.
Let me just finish this, please, 'cause I mean, there's a lot of people compassionate that, that put a lot of time into that Washington Park right now. And I don't think that's fair to say that it will be chain linked and it will be closed, 'cause there's a lot of people that put a lot of time in down there. They raise a lot of money. So that's not a fair statement to say, but I will say one thing. I am not, I am not arguing with you about this point. I'm arguing about be fiscal responsible and look at the, the, the hidden costs down the road. That's all I'm saying. We just can't, we gotta look at the, the, the big picture. That's all I'm saying.
There's, there's some, I mean, I, I don't know, even know if I should continue, because Mike's gotta finish his presentation. But I, I'll, I'll say this. There's needs and wants. The needs, the needs, uh, infrastructure, roads. You can't get the Washington Park if you don't have a road to drive on, okay? So all this stuff, I don't know if you've been driving around looking, you know? I know I drove over a lot of frosties and, and holes in the pavement and everything else. We're gonna be spending some money on hot tub pretty soon, and we're gonna be fixing drains and everything else. The infrastructure is gonna be coming apart at the seams after this rough winter. That's what's gonna, so I know we're talking about CPA money, but I'm just saying that it, we can't, we might have to choose which things we're gonna use CPA money on. We can't, we can't have the wishlist.
And I think that's, that's what, after you do the presentation, we will have the opportunity to decide what we want. You know, did you say that every one of these that you support?
Yes.
Every one?
Yes.
Were there any others that you rejected?
No.
So everyone was?
Yes.
At this, you couldn't have put it off, or any, you never talked about that?
Right.
Okay, all right, all right.
We do have a financial plan in place, and again, it's on the website. I won't go into it. And we're, we're not proposing to spend, you know, one point seven million dollars. We're not planning on spending all that money. We have a plan on how we plan to spend CPA money in the future. And plus, we're under some constraint as to the ten percentages of that money. Not all of that money can be spent on just anything of any of the four categories. More of the money has to be spent on affordable housing, because of that ten percent is built up.
Provided by the state.
Yes, over the, over the years. No, but over the years, the money that we've collected, every year, ten percent of it must be spent on affordable housing. And we've never really spent money prior to twenty thirteen on affordable housing.
Regated for affordable housing. That's the initial.
Yes, yes, exactly.
The consequences, if we ignore the affordable housing ratio, the consequences are we could get docked on our local aid.
Yes, that's what the state threatens.
They could certainly say you're not eligible for other grants, but you haven't provided the ten percent.
Right. Mike, I'll ask one more question. Let's just say, all seven of these, or how many there are, make it on town.
Seven.
They make it on town ballot.
Yes.
How much is gonna cost the CPA to have those seven? How much money does CPA need to come up with?
No, it's, um. Okay, these projects will be, um, nine hundred and thirteen thousand.
And how much will be left of the CPA money when it's all said and done?
No, I'm sorry. These projects are eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand, and there'll be nine hundred and thirteen thousand dollars left. We take in approximately, between collections and matches, we take in approximately three hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year.
That includes the hundred percent match?
That includes a sixty percent match. So sometimes it's more than that.
Why is it more than that sometimes?
It, it depends, because we, because we have three percent, because we collect three percent, we get a hundred percent match sometimes, because we go to round two and round three. If you only have one percent, then you, you only get the first round of funding. Groveland has done very well with the match, you know? Since, since we've had CPA, we've received over one point seven million dollars in state matching funds. So we've done very well.
All right, we have a few more.
Would you like to continue, Mike?
Sure, sure.
Shall we send off a copy?
Yeah, okay. The third warrant article is for a historic preservation project, seventy-five thousand dollars. It's requested by the Cemetery Commission. And this is gonna provide funding to restore the Riverview Cemetery Griffin Memorial Arch and the stone walls that are surrounding it. The, in, in twenty thirteen, we funded a project for the cemetery. It was about twenty-eight thousand dollars we funded for a plan. So it makes sense to, to me, and I think to you also, probably, is what you're saying, is, you know, a lot of times we wanna have plans. What do you, what could you do? Why are you doing this? So that's what they did. They have a, they had a consultant put together, a historic consultant put together, a plan with the cemetery. What makes the most sense to do, to spend money? If you're gonna spend money on historic preservation, or you're gonna restore things, what, what makes sense? So that plan has been guiding them now for the last year and a half. And so what they came up with, what they would like to do is, this year, they would like seventy-five thousand dollars to work on the arch, to restore it to its original state, clean it, and, uh.
Has this been bid yet?
No.
So this is just a nest of them on somebody's property?
All of them are. That's all we, that's all you can do. And then they will go out to bid. So it, you know, what we're saying here, it's not gonna be more than seventy-five thousand dollars. Most of the time, when we go out for bid, Denise works on that portion of it, and it comes out to be less than what was voted.
So this is a structure that was built in eighteen seventy-three, then the wall around it was built in nineteen-ten.
Yes.
So after all these years, needs a little care.
Yeah, never has had any, I don't believe it, any work on it.
This would be an override item, along with everything else, if we didn't have CPA. So what we're asking, what, what, whoever, I forgot who put this proposal together.
Cemetery Commission.
Cemetery folks that feel that this is an important investment for the heritage, the culture, and the history of the town. Would, there'd be no other money to do this if we didn't have CPA money. So, so the alternative, so the alternative is if we don't do the project, then eventually, in, let's say, in thirty years, we're gonna have to take it down and build it, rebuild it with concrete. Quality of life.
But can I just say something? And I'm not trying to be.
Bill, all of these projects have a quality of life.
But don't tell the taxpayers, like you're, you're trying to do, Joe, make it sound like something's falling down there. It's not falling down yet.
It is. It actually is.
It's fallen, is it unsafe right now?
Not that it's unsafe. The wall is falling apart.
But don't, that's what I can't stand. I can't stand when people make the town people believe that something's bad. It isn't bad yet. Is it bad, Mike? Is it ready to fall down? Have they deemed it unsafe? That's all I wanna know.
Seen the photos.
Okay, leave it at that.
All right, Mike, moving on to number four.
Sure.
Unless somebody else had a question. Sorry.
No, we'll get out of here by ten if I have any questions.
Okay.
We're shutting off the clocks at nine.
Okay, so that was number three. Number four is for the restoration, preservation of a portion of the historic main building at VZ Park, which will include replacement, energy efficient windows, and entrance door in the great hall, and some safety work on one of the fireplaces in the VZ suite.
Is the fireplace a working fireplace?
Yes, it is, but it's somewhat unsafe.
Yeah, that's a dangerous piece. It has to be maintained and whatever scrubbed chemically, and we can't keep using it the way we're using it. It could be a fire there, and we'll have a real problem.
New energy efficient windows, do they have, are they, you know, people have something that's historic and they?
Yes.
Do they have any energy efficient windows that are historic?
Well, yes. We, we, we did get a quote for something that's gonna fit in with the nature of the building. The building is, that particular part of the building is, dates back to, I believe, somewhere around nineteen fifty, early fifties. So it's not as difficult to find things for that. But the, the, this is a case where the windows are actually falling out. And the, same with the door. The door is, is getting, so it won't close. It doesn't, doesn't work. And, you know, that part of the building gets regular use, you know, by meetings and events. It's, you know, gets a lot, that particular part of the building gets the most use of any place up there, so. And this project is going to get a two thousand dollar match from the Friends of VZ. So, um, the project is actually gonna cost nineteen thousand, five hundred, but the Friends of VZ are donating two thousand dollars towards it. The next project, number five, is for the preservation of historical documents and objects at the Langley Adams Library. The library received an LSTA grant from the state for about forty-two hundred dollars that enabled them to put a plan together, similar to what was done at the cemetery, for how they can address preserving the historic resources that they have available in the library. The library hasn't had the ability to address these things. And so some of it is in, they have paper records and volumes and maps, you know, sitting in the basement. So this, this project is gonna enable them to, to not only protect the materials and shelve them better, but also make them more available for research by townspeople. Because right now, they're not really available. So this is for fifty-one thousand dollars under the historic preservation category. And it's already had that LSTA grant that's directing them forty-two hundred dollars. So that's why they, they know exactly what needs to be done here for the fifty-one thousand dollars. The sixth project is for developing plans for the improvement of Groveland Square. As, I think we discussed it earlier, but Conservation has been working with the selectmen to look at Groveland Square and what could be done, in particular with the former Getty Station area there and the lot that sits there with the post office on it. So this will enable us to do an appraisal on the property for wetland study, since it's pretty much a hundred percent located within the two-hundred-foot buffer zone of the Merrimack River, and also update the plans that were put together for the property back in two thousand and five by the Groveland Square Committee. But none of this would take place unless the, a purchase and sale were negotiated for the property and the town. the property, and the town figured out what they were going to do and how they were going to proceed. So, this will enable the planning to, to, to take place after all of that's done.
And a little history on that, there's been at least ten years of interest in Groveland Square development, including that parcel. There wasn't a appraisal done on the parcel in two thousand and eight.
Yes.
So, part of this package is to update that appraisal. So, this expenditure of this, twenty-one thousand, would be done in three parts. One of them is the appraisal, and none of those would occur unless there was a successful purchase and sale.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
At what point in time, and who would be voting to buy that parcel?
That's up to you.
The Board of Selectmen would be the, the authority.
Plus, we'd want to see a twenty-one E, if it's a...
Right, right. We're expecting that.
Absolutely, we need that.
That's to be expected, I believe, by July was the latest date on that.
We'd want to probably, we'd probably want to spend a fair...
Currently?
It's privately owned.
Yeah, it's privately owned.
Is that two thousand and eight appraisal, right of the bridge?
It's all one lot.
Sure, on the bridge.
The, the appraisal in two thousand and eight, the, the, we'd been in the works with the bridge for ten or years.
Yes.
Ten, fifteen years, correct?
Yes.
Who did that appraisal? Do you recall?
You mean the appraiser, or who requested it?
Who requested it?
Greg LeBrecq. Greg came in and requested that we spend some administrative CPA money on it. So, it was funded with CPA funds already, yeah.
Was he working with the square, or Bridge and Square Committee back then? That was, they had a special charge from the Board of Selectmen? Greg was involved with them, and they had agreed, apparently, they must have agreed to go get an appraisal.
Yes, yes, I believe so.
There was, there was an actual committee?
I would hope that we do get an appraisal, because as I, as I presented before...
Yes.
That's now somewhat of a landlocked piece of land, and it needs to be reappraised, because it's not worth what it was in two thousand and eight.
Right, right, exactly.
And I know Joe just...
I just want to caution everyone, we do not own this, we do not have any conversations right now with the owner. It really shouldn't be discussed in public meeting, any purchasing of this property. Because she has an attorney, she hasn't, she has not approached the town to purchase it lately, so we just need to be cautious when we're discussing this property in public.
Thank you.
Is it premature even to have an owner's warrant?
It's up for you to decide.
I don't think so, but...
Coleman and Page would look all of this over in a way.
Yes, they're going to have to, right.
Shouldn't they know that we're not...
Yeah, that's a good point, buddy. Good idea.
Number seven...
If somebody has a question, anybody with a question, their hand up.
Number seven is for the revitalization of Washington Park to improve the field conditions and infrastructure, as well as overhauling the entire playground that's located there. This project is a request for two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, I don't know if that's correct. Two-twenty. Yes, okay, yes, right.
Because there's an in-kind donation value to two-twenty-two.
Yes, exactly, that's it. So, that's where that number, the, the entire project is going to cost two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, but they have, Groveland Baseball has in-kind donations of thirty-two thousand, so the CPA request is for two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. Groveland Baseball has done, you know, a fantastic job there. It's, this is going to address some things that they just cannot, are not able to, to do themselves, such as lighting, repair of the parking lot, fencing.
Handicap accessible.
Yes. In, in the playground, which, which really doesn't have anything to do with baseball, but they're, you know, willing to take it on, because they, they care about the park.
It'll also make it ADA approved?
Yes.
Which it's not now.
Right, right.
Is additional lighting going to be added?
Yes.
Another field, I believe, huh?
Yes.
There's also been a change with the baseball program. Their...
Bill, Will probably can speak to that.
Some of the categories have shifted with to inter, inter, what do you call it, multiple towns?
Right, the Town Baseball League is, is going to IPTL, they call it, the Town...
Bill, will you tell everybody who you are?
Still on your forty-five dollar mark.
Thanks.
No problem. Our finance committee, Groveland Baseball is moving to over the IPTL, as I said, into Town Baseball. It's a kind of a cross between traditional Little League, which is forty-six feet to the pitcher's mound, and sixty feet between bases, and Major League dimensions, which are ninety feet between bases, and sixty feet, six inches to home plate. It's fifty-seventy league. It's amongst a number of towns, I can't name them all, Georgetown, Salisbury, I think Triton is involved, might be another town from New Hampshire as well. But it's a chance for the, the youth to play, get ready for that larger high school field, Major League field. So, it requires a renovation of one of the, what we used to call the triple-A field. The Major League field will now be used for the triple-A games, which are also the Holy Inter Town, and the former triple-A field has been converted at the Groveland Baseball's expense to a fifty-seventy league, a concomitant of a fifty-seventy game. We also purchased a new scoreboard, and over the years, I can attest to it, its trade have put in quite a bit of money into that, into those fields, and done as much as, as can humanly be possible and financially, with the financial resources we have. Basically, that's why they reached out to CPA. I'm passionate about the program, I'm passionate about the children in the town. I'd rather see them at the park at nine o'clock than hanging out in the street doing something that we're not going to be proud of.
That's right.
This is an opportunity for, not only the, the baseball kids, but I, I go by there night and day, and it's not just baseball kids. That, that park is being used year-round, if it can be. Given the conditions right now, obviously not, but I see kids teach, parents teaching their kids how to ride a bike in the parking lot, going to the playground, and that, that playground is, as much as we try to do it, if you ever go by it, it's disgraceful. The town and the children, we all deserve something a little bit better. It's that simple.
Now, the, just so, so the public understands, nationally, there's been a decline in participation in baseball at the youth levels. That's happening here locally as well. So, one of the driving reasons why you went with the inter-league with multiple towns, sort of like a limited travel baseball.
Correct.
That allows a smaller number of kids to be exposed to a high-quality program. So, you don't have a smaller number of kids playing, playing each other ten times or five times.
Correct.
And so, participation in the new league compels us, therefore, to have the lighting and reconfiguring the field.
To participate in the fifty-seventy.
And having a scoreboard.
Absolutely.
Okay, so that's the driver. So, that's why these folks came up with the plan that is asking for two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Now, there was a change, Mike, there was a change in the law that did not allow a town park, or the, this, the Washington Park, to have access to any public funding for development and revitalization. Is that correct?
Under CPA, yes.
CPA, exactly.
Yes. They changed the rule so that now you can do that. Previously, unless the town purchased the land with CPA funds, then you could use it to develop or revitalize a park. But now, they changed the rule so that this type of project is perfectly legitimate.
This is a great example, Bill, you articulated it well. We deserve better, this is a quality-of-life issue. I probably wouldn't vote for two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar override to fix Washington Park, so I'm thankful that we have another mechanism to do that, as leverage with the least amount of dollars. Again, municipal planning, development, have an ambition for the future. You guys did a great job.
I'd also like to add, to your point, that windmill numbers, they had, last year, we only had three Major League teams, but with this new league, we actually have four Major League teams rented into the, the, the league this year, which is a three, three percent increase. So, it says the kids do want to play.
Not, the, the, this might come back, sure. More competitive.
Build the field, and they will come.
Introduces the kids into that Cape Anne League, too, because they'll be meeting these kids when they go on to high school.
Absolutely.
A lot of these kids they play against, which is nice.
How many years, we had seven glorious years in Washington Park, how many years did you have?
I loved them there, since my dad coached, and my brothers played Little League, so... And it certainly has evolved into a wonderful field. It went from gravel to, it looks pretty good to me right now, but it can only be better and nicer for everyone. Thanks, Bill, for sharing that.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
Thanks, Mike. You have an eighth piece?
That's it.
Oh, there's an eighth piece here, article, twenty thousand, the Community Preservation General Reserve, for the purpose of administrative expenses.
Yes.
That's a, that's a final article.
Yes, that's moving money into the administrative, and that's only, you know, that's only spent, that's not spent unless it's, you know, spent on communication, or spent on, on appraisals or smaller items, but that money stays as CPA funds that can be used on projects.
With this proposal, your recommendations, they will come to all of us and say everything, you know, we agreed upon favorable action. This is a lot of work.
Mm-hmm.
This is going to be a lot of work for the administrator, who's going to go out and listen to, get bids out, and work with vendors, and I'm thinking this is going to be a lot of work for our finance director.
Yes.
Is there, was there any place in here for compensation to do this work? Because that's not all she has to do.
I understand, yes. Well, that, that, that can come out of CPA funds, out of the administrative funds, yes.
There's administrative money probably to help out with that.
Yes.
Because, I mean, this is really a woman's work, right?
Right. I mean, some towns pay, use CPA funds to hire, you know, administrator to do all this stuff, so...
And I think Denise, who's very proactive, has been looking into what other communities do, and sharing of resources, doing this type of... Any questions, Mike? For us?
So, that would be additional CPA money if we were to include that?
The administrative costs that would...
No, we, you...
That's not built into these.
We, we have a warrant article for, to transfer twenty thousand dollars to cover administrative fund, administrative costs, so it would just be a matter of deciding to spit, spend, you know, that the town wanted to spend some money going towards helping Denise do that, and then having CPC approve it. So, it could be done.
Got any questions, Denise, about our projects?
Yep.
Or we proceed? Thanks for coming in and being our guest and sitting on the hot seat. Good thing we don't have people calling in. You did a good job.
Well, you know...
Everybody's, everybody, you know, Finance Committee's been around a long time, and they know sometimes we get into things and we don't have enough money, or...
Yes.
Work into the bottom line. And Bill is, you know, in business, and Denise has seen this.
Mike, I can feel for you tonight, because I sat where you were a few weeks ago with Mr. Lay in his, in the fire department, so...
And he's always putting this on the hot seat.
Yeah, well, he's here, I, I made sure he was here before I said it, so don't feel bad.
And look, they're both still sitting and standing.
We still, we're still friends, right?
Absolutely.
And Mike and I will still be friends.
Well, you know, I, as I said in the beginning, I don't, I'm not the expert on all of these projects, you know what I mean? So, I would advise you to, if you have any of the projects that you have a lot of questions on, at least go on the website and take a look at the proposal themselves, because I think that may answer some of the questions that I couldn't answer tonight, or we didn't have time for. And, you know, as I say, also, at town meeting, it will be on the burden of the proponents of each project to be there and to answer the townspeople's questions, which a lot of times are far worse than any questions that you guys have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, the finance is meeting.
We have a little meeting, Mike, I just wanted to...
Oh, you're going to meet with...
Yeah, we're meeting with the, yes, we're meeting with the Fire Chief. I just wanted to say while I was here, it's kind of fun, what ends up happening is, we end up looking at all these budgets and stuff, and there's some things we don't really have any control over, and maybe we should discuss some of these at time with the Selectmen, when they have time, when they have time to do this. There's different items in here that have been proposed, where the salary changes that are going to be drastic increases, and to make some of the decisions for us, we don't know what contracts are being signed, we don't know, you know, what agreements are being made, and what the thought process is of, you know, eliminating a job, and gaining a job, and passing some of those responsibilities on to that other person. There's a lot of that type of stuff in it, and I don't know, we don't have time to discuss some of that, because really, when we meet with these different groups, we're just kind of spinning our wheels if there's a contract going to be signed, and it really is a waste of time for us to even discuss something. So, that's, it's, we don't really know the final thing, because it's kind, it's still open, and I don't know if that's stuff that ends up being discussed in executive session or not, but because it's contracts and stuff like that, but it's just something...
Well, the only people that have contracts, the police department, the dispatches, who else?
Well, different salaries that are going to be adjusted.
But you said the key word, proposed.
Proposed, right. I mean, but I, it's stuff that, when we end up, we talk about the different things, we, we don't know if we're on the same page with the Selectmen and what, how that's being looked at. I'm seeing different, we're seeing different pay raises, where it's saying there's added responsibility in this different thing, and is sometimes I'm wondering, does a job need to be eliminated, or does a job not need to be eliminated? Is it going to be that we're going to cut it back, and we're going to give the added responsibility, and that year we're going to be back up at that salary, trying to bump that up to a full-time salary again?
What you're trying to say is have the dialogue with the Selectmen to discuss it would be good, if it could be done.
Right, so, if I can, the, he's referring to my position and the administrative assistants' position. There are only three positions right now that are highlighted in yellow in the budgets, mine, the administrative assistant, and the fire chief. And those three are all up for discussion with this board.
So, but the thing is, is we're, we're making decisions on budgets.
You're making...
And to be unaffected by that, and I'm not, and I wasn't saying anybody in particular, because I didn't want to put anybody on the spot, but...
It's okay.
The thing is, is that, there's, you know, we've had different positions that were full-time, and it being eliminated, but there's a significant pay raise on the other end. And that's my question, is, is, was that person needed? Is the person not needed? Are we going to go to a, a lesser salary? Can we find a person for a lesser salary? And are we still going to be paying medical benefits for that person? So, that's, that's all the different things.
Well, when somebody retires, they do retire with their health insurance, if they've been a full-time employee.
Right, but what I'm saying is, is the person that's going to replace that potty, whether that person is.
That's in the...
When they replace the potty, and we're going to go with a part-time, or with a lesser salary, a significant lesser salary than what the other person did, but we're going to have added responsibilities on to the other person.
Well, we're going to put something on the agenda tonight to be talked about at the next, when we meet again.
Okay.
And then we will definitely be talking with you, as we always do.
Okay.
When we get down to the nitty-gritty, correct? We'll all be sitting together.
I'd just like to try to do it, we can do it before we, the midnight hour, before town meeting.
Yeah, we don't want to do that last...
Yeah.
I think you bring up a good point, and Bill's point also is a... And Bill's point also is a, it's a process problem, because traditionally, these two boards work together from the middle to the end of the process. And the first time you meet in 2015 for 2016, perhaps we should've been with you. We should be having a joint board discussion right out of the box. And then a mid-meeting and then final meetings. But what, what I've seen, the tradition is, it's not anybody's fault, it's just the way it's gone. It's, you know, for example, I'm looking at these numbers, you've highlighted things and you guys, I don't know how, that must've been a very difficult discussion that you've had, because you're, you're putting numbers out there for three positions, but you haven't consulted with us as to what our plan is, what we wanna do with those positions. It's, you know, a terrible position for you.
Those are, those are not the Finance Committee's recommendations. Those are based on our discussions amongst the three board members.
I'm trying to understand what this is.
Totally in the dark.
So we should have that first meeting of the year together. We had, we've had two all-board, we've had two all-board meetings in, in the last month and we're making things happen in the area of zoning. So, uh, that's just a suggestion that maybe we join you right at the beginning.
Well, just to be fair, I mean, it, the Finance Director's given us a lot of information. We've gotten a lot of stuff. She really has given us a lot of information that we've got email to us and stuff to try to keep on top of everything that's going on. But there's a lot of different things in there that, you know, I don't have the answer because it's something that might be signed off on by somebody else. I had a question, I asked about, um, we now, we've always been part of Essex Ag, now we're also part of North Shore Volk Tech. We have Whittier Volk Tech. Now we're part of two Volk Techs.
Is Essex Ag, you now rolled into North Shore?
Yes.
North Shore. So what happened is, is North Shore, I had Denise explain some of it to us, that basically we have six people going to North Shore Volk Tech, three are seniors, three others, I don't know where they are, but they're in, they're in the class structure. And the question I have is, now that, right now, I know we're getting some transportation money, am I right? Or are we getting something, we're supposedly, but let's just put it this way, that there's another line item there for another school. How many schools are we gonna have? We have one Volk Tech, we don't have two Volk Techs. They've changed the philosophy, I can understand taking grandfather and the kids that are currently in that, that's not their fault that the system has changed. But we have to look at down the road, something right now, this $220,000 is gonna gradually turn into a million dollars. So we have to start looking at, do we have two schools? Do we have three schools? How many schools are we gonna have? Are we locked into North Shore Volk Tech? Or at this point in time, we can get out of it and, and continue with who's already in there, to be fair to the students that are there now? That's my question I have. That's one, that's one of the many that have come up in here. So what happens is, we look through this quick, just glancing over it quick to certain things that just punch out. And I know that's not on the agenda for tonight and I'm not gonna, it's just something to think about. If we could set up another date, as the Fire Chief's waiting, I hate to have him, uh, stay here all night long, I'm sure he's got other important business to do. So, we'll move on.
Yeah, we'd love to meet, I'm sure, Betty. You would agree.
Well, I can schedule you for next Monday to meet with them. They have a full agenda, but I can schedule...
Well, you, you're, you're going away.
I'm not gonna be here, no.
Okay.
Yeah, we wanna have Bill.
You meet next Monday, Bill? You're meeting Monday?
We have a meeting Monday.
We could, Denise, you...
We have like three, we have three people.
Yeah, they have a full meeting, but, I mean...
Could you, could Joe and Denise and myself, Bill's gonna go on vacation?
I'll be back the night before, so I should be here.
Yeah.
No, I think you're not here next Monday, Bill is, correct?
No, Bill's leaving this weekend.
I'm leaving Sunday.
This coming Sunday?
He's leaving Sunday, I'm coming back Sunday. So I'll be here Monday, the 23rd.
I'm not talking about the 23rd, we're talking about next Monday.
Next Monday, I won't be here, no. No, I'm sorry.
And you won't be here.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I guess I'll just be with them.
You mean literally next Monday, I thought you meant next Monday meeting, huh?
Next Monday.
Don't worry about it, I'll, I'll meet with Finance Committee.
Yeah, you can, I mean, I'm going.
We could meet, we could vote, we could have a discussion.
Why don't the two of you meet? But it would probably be good to discuss with the other selectmen, so we get what they're talking about.
Betty, why don't you meet?
The, the items in discussion are what we've been discussing in executive session.
Exactly, Denise, Denise and I could go in, right? We're not gonna take a vote.
You certainly can, you should, why not?
One of my questions is, and I guess I may be a model line by saying this, I look at some of these numbers and...
Well, we have to go over that.
You haven't done that.
Oh, sorry.
They just got put in our case.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for the entertaining, but thank you.
I left you some updated packets in there.
My pleasure, thanks, I'll be best.
Are they going in your office?
Bill, I left you some updated packages in there.
Okay.
And your agenda and some items on the table in that place.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. Okay. You think you'll get an A?
Yeah, I'll take information, huh? Thank you.
What you put her through. Bye-bye, thank you. Steve, did you wanna see us?
Nope.
You just wanna hang out with us?
I wanna hang out. I heard Steve DA, so I wanted to come in.
You what?
I heard CPA, so I wanted to come in. That's all.
The DA would just...
I heard CPA.
CPA.
Yeah, CPA, okay.
Which I just got told that we need to, uh, hurry up on us, 'cause June 30th is the cutoff and we have to go back to, uh, the town.
It just has to be bid.
I know, that's what I told them.
Okay, um...
Sorry, bid and awarded.
I think it's this time.
Yes, I think so, too.
Um, are we, um, on to votes of the board?
No.
No?
So now it's the budget and capital improvement. So I'm gonna take capital improvement first. Since this board, um, discussed on February 10th and voted to support a number of 750,000, I think it's important, um, that you three refer the matter back to capital improvements to, uh, look at their number and see if they support the 750. Um, I think it's more important to go into town meeting with one number that all three financial bodies recommend, instead of having to amend it on town meeting floor.
Okay.
Uh, so if you are interested in reverting this back to, um, capital improvement, I told, um, the chair that I would call him tomorrow if he needs to schedule a meeting.
So we can revert in one of two ways, with the number voted or with a different number?
Well, you have already voted.
Right.
Who voted the 850?
You have voted the 850.
Oh, 750.
750 is what, is what this group voted to support.
We voted and they voted 850.
Correct.
So we would ask them to...
So you could ask them to reconsider.
Re-adjust their number.
Oh, I see, I didn't realize it did 850.
They voted 850, which technically it's the capital improvement, a number that goes in the warrant. So this group would have to ask for an amendment on town meeting floor if you wanted to support the 750. I think it's easier to have them reconsider and vote going into town meeting.
What do you feel about that, Betty?
I, I feel it's gonna make it cleaner and support that.
That we would ask them to consider 750?
Yes.
Yeah, I agree.
Bill, you feel the same way?
Yes, definitely.
Need a motion on that, Denise?
Uh, yes, why don't you? Just to, um, ask the capital improvements to reconsider their number based on your recommendation.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that the capital improvement committee reconsider their voted number and to have it aligned with our voted number, 750,000.
And, and, and to, yeah, and to clarify what we're talking about is the ladder truck that we had discussed earlier on, the 750 purchase price.
And that's, um, do I have a second on Joe's motion?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Okay.
All in favor?
All right, all right.
Unanimous to Denise for Jeff and his board?
Sure.
They'll do that for us.
Okay, so now, um, in your packet is the working budget that we are working through.
Mm-hmm, the one that they just jumped the gun, started talking about.
But that's okay. The first two pages are our revenue estimates, um, the money that we're estimating to come in from local receipts, property taxes, state aid. Any number in this or in the budget that's yellow is still not certain.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we, I was hit today with an additional 251,046 dollars from additional assessments from Penticott, um, due to the, um, state aid decline that they received and the adjustment in the minimum net school spending. Groveland is taking the impact because they determine that our residents are wealthier than the other two communities. So, we were left with quite the deficit as of this afternoon. Um, I reached out to the assessors to see if they would release some overlay money of 195,000. They are scheduled to meet on Friday, March 20th, uh, and they will take it up then to see if they will release those funds to help us balance the budget.
Good meeting Friday?
Friday, the 20th.
The 20th, March 20th.
Yes.
Where were the balance coming from? Were fortunate to get the 195?
So, right now, as it stands, there's a 67,000, $64,000 deficit. So, after the 195, I went through and recommended some additional cuts to almost every budget, minimal amounts here and there. Um, have looked to, um, you know, some of the positions, um, for instance, the, um, and I know you just took out papers, Bill, but the tree warden, um, the expense money, I was told that the highway department actually handles the cutting down of the trees, so there's no sense to budget for an additional money in that expense line when his budget covers that. So, we eliminated that, um, and then, again, just chipped away here and there at different budgets. We are still left with 64,000. Um, there are, again, still some unknowns when it comes to the revenue side. And the school number is not a definite, the school committee was meeting this evening, so that number could change. Um, I was told if it changes, it's gonna be more of an impact to us, um, because, uh, the superintendent was presenting his list of cuts tonight to the school committee and they were not sure that they were gonna embrace all of their cuts. So there is a potential that they come back and say, no, we don't wanna lay off these six people, we don't wanna eliminate these things, we wanna assess you even more.
So, the, uh, the, the school budget, as, as I wrote, as, as I read it this afternoon, was going to be 2.15% more than the year before. But for the town of Groveland, because of the reassessment, I mean, more than that, it'll exceed our two and a half percent.
Yes.
That potentially could create an override condition.
It could, if we cannot balance the budget.
Right.
We have a $64,000 deficit?
Yes.
How much is the tree warden budget?
10,000.
So...
But that's already been removed. So after I remove that out of my recommendation, we're still left with 64,000 as a deficit.
What are the, the overlay, can you describe what that is? I don't know exactly what that is.
Sure, so each year, uh, which you'll see on the, um, if you look at the revenue side, um, the total receipts on the second page, reserve for abatements, receivables, um, every year we put 150,000, that's been historically what the number is, aside, um, to deal with abatements or ATB cases on the assessor's side. So, if nobody files an abatement or if you have no ATB cases, that whole 150,000 sits there until the assessors vote to release that money back into the budget. So, we have overlay money back to 2009, I believe. So, we've looked at taking 2009, 10, 11, we have to leave what's in there that we have as outstanding receivables. So we do have money and outstanding taxes for those years. Um, and then part of 2012, and then, so we would leave money from 2012, 13, 14. So we're not, we're not taking all of our reserves, um, but they should release it anyways. We really shouldn't let that account build up, the state actually doesn't like that. Um, so by releasing those funds, again, it's only a one-time revenue source, so if we can't find ways to balance the budget next year, uh, we won't have that 195,000, we may have another amount. Um, so I hate to rely on those one-time revenue sources, it's like using stabilization or free cash, it's not always a definite. So, um, but I think, I think given the Center Street project, um, and the money that's going to hit the residence tax bills this coming January, um, the potential for a new school building, um, I don't think it's appropriate to go to the residence for an override. I think we need to do everything we can to, to balance the budget, um, before we go to the residence.
My, my opinion would be to agree with that, of course.
Bill, did you have a question? So, the items and, so then, in the next group is the actual budget document. On the left-hand side of the page is what was appropriated in fiscal 14, what we've spent in that fiscal year, what was appropriated last year. Um, then on the right-hand side, there's a department requested. Um, as you know, I had every department, or I requested every department complete a budget request, uh, what they needed for their department, why they needed it, backup to explain, um, any increases. And then the next column is what I've recommended, um, to both this group and the fin, Finance Board, um, as amounts to go forward. Again, no one has to take my recommendation, but, um, that, that is what I've recommended. Again, we're still off. The items that are in yellow are unknowns, those are just numbers that I've plugged based on our conversations. Um, the numbers in green were unknowns that are now, um, known numbers. So, as the numbers are coming in that are more definite, the health insurance came in, um, at an increase of approximately 5.6% last week. Luckily for us, the higher increase is 9, 10%, um, we're on plans that are not very popular here. So, the weighted average at 5.6, we made off a little bit better than that. Um, I will still work with the people that are in those plans that are going up higher increases and see if there's any appetite to change. Most people take an insurance plan just because of the name, not necessarily the coverage, so I will reach out and educate some of those people and see if there's any appetite to switch.
How many are there in that higher premium bracket?
Well, this year, unfortunately, the higher premium is the two, again, not so much here, but across the state, the two most popular plans, the Harvard Plan and the Tufts Plan. We don't have a lot, uh, we probably have 10 in both plans combined. Um, but still, it's, you know, it's them wasting their own money if they don't need to be in that type of plan. So, during open enrollment, I will reach out to them and, um, again, educate them on what the plans offer and see if they have any interest in changing.
I think if we're pointed out to them that there's a plan out there that's very comparable and it's less money for them, and they still can choose their own doctor, because everybody wants to choose their own doctor.
Right.
Um, it probably will get some positive feedback.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
If you were to take the, um, for, for instance, I'm not trying to, if you were to take the chief's salary, so in, in, uh, in FY 16, it was, it was gonna be a number and now you all suggested a amount, does that need to be voted on by us or that's just some...
The items in yellow are, this board needs to decide on.
Okay.
Um, so, for instance, with the, um, the chief's salary, obviously his contract expired, um, the amount that he requested in his line was for 30 hours of work. Um, the number that I recommended just merely to plug a number was at 25 hours. I didn't, you know, we've had some conversations, I don't know if this group was ready to go up to 30, so I picked a number in between where he is and the 30. Um, and that's pretty much how it was, the same thing with my salary, the same thing with the administrative assistant. I just had to stick numbers in there to make something work.
So we're not, it's not eggs in stone yet, we're still working on that?
Nope, nope, you vote on everything in here. You can change everything that I've recommended and put in any of us.
This isn't done, this has to be done by...
It's a deadline, Denise?
Town meeting.
Town meeting.
Well.
But go to, we go to print with the warrant?
Yes. So the beginning of April.
The whole budget you're talking about? I think what Bill is asking, can a line item be a warrant? Like a salary? No.
I, I don't follow.
Is that what you're asking, Bill?
No, I just, I was just, she answered me. It's, it's quite a significant, I think it's a significant increase on that, the fire chief, and I was just wondering. It wasn't eggs in stone. It's your suggestion. Now we got to come back and work on it.
Again, I just picked a number to try and balance the budget. So for those three that are in yellow, I just picked a number based on some discussions we had had. With the fire chief, one thing, and I know it's, you know, we need to negotiate a contract. To actually change his hours, you do not need to negotiate a contract. So you could just tell him going forward what type of, how many hours. So that's something that you could do with him. Does not necessarily need to be negotiated.
Can I go back to the Penticott? I'm sorry, Bill, are you?
No, I'm good. She answered my question.
The Penticott base assessment, we went from seven point two million to seven point nine. That's shocking.
But it's not, because I'm only given two numbers from Penticott, a base assessment and capital. In the past, they would break out the supplemental assessment number of two hundred and forty-four thousand. I don't know what that number represents, and I'll be honest, I have no idea what that number is. I've tried to figure it out. I've tried to figure out how you come up with three numbers from two numbers. I don't know. So I figured since in their budget, it's two numbers, I'm given two numbers, I'm putting in the warrant as two numbers. So that's seven-nine is really the combination of seven-one from the previous year and the two hundred and forty-four thousand. But I don't know where that number comes from, so.
Seven point nine plus five.
So you haven't been able?
It is seven-nine plus five.
All right.
But in the previous year, it was the seven million, one ninety-four, two forty-four, and five forty-five.
Oh, I see it.
So what you're saying is you have not been able to get to the bottom of the assessment?
The supplemental assessment.
Right, how they're assessing us. You haven't been able to get to the bottom of it.
Correct. And Greg had said it was something like, anything more than the previous year was considered a supplemental, but I couldn't tie out to the numbers. And again, their budget has two numbers. I've given two numbers. To me, then it should go as two numbers in the warrant, is my opinion.
And, and one comment you had made earlier, they think that we're a richer town and we need to pay more. How do they arrive at that?
It's, it's the state's calculations.
So you can't go back and question, you can't go back and question it?
You can call your senator and your local representative.
That's the only place we can go, huh?
Yeah, I mean, it's, and I will tell you, so I did attend a legislative hearing on Friday, or meetings on Friday. We are not the only regional school that's having this issue. It's every regional school in the state. For whatever reason, when they reassessed and, and reallocated state aid, the regional schools took a hit.
You know, historically, and this is an opinion, we had a promise when we regionalized that we would have extra margins of support. And now regions, regional school systems in particular are, are being targeted, for lack of a better word, for less funding. It's like they're going back on the promise, and it's hurting us. And this town, you know, it's hurting us.
A hypothetical question.
Very upsetting to see that.
It is. Let me just, so one of the reasons why my recommendation is to use overlay in such a large amount this year is we're hoping that next year, it's recalculated and the state readjusts the state aid and the, and the minimum net school spending ratio. We have no way of knowing that, but that's one hope, is that it'll sort of be worked out over the next year and that we won't be in this situation next year, but we don't know.
So chapter seventy was communicated in the news, that, you know, was boosted up. It boils down to twenty bucks a kid in Penticott, which is like throwing a pebble in the ocean.
Yep.
First of all. Secondly, what about the local aid? They said that there was an increase in local aid. Does that distill to us and help us in any way?
So we got about thirty-eight thousand dollars more in state aid.
That's it.
That's it. So it does help us, but obviously not enough in this situation. One of the problems historically with schools, and this is actually all schools in general, is the special education funding. So the state does not fully provide for special education. And the school districts really have to deal with educating these students or providing for them to be educated in another school district. And that's what's really hurting schools across the state, is we just cannot keep up with the requirements and the needs of special education. And there's no one funding it.
We, we budget for that in current fiscal year, and then there is a seventy percent reimbursement the following year? Or has that changed, the circuit breaker?
I, I don't know if it's actually seventy percent. It's not enough. And I know the circuit breaker is where people keep asking for increases to come through.
Hypothetical question.
Yes.
I don't know how many years ago, but they proposed many years ago to build our own high school over here. Do you think, I know it's going to cost money to get it up and running, do you think at the end of the day, we could save money by getting out of the regional system?
Georgetown has their own high school and they.
It's going to be, it costs more.
So, I mean, even if you just look at administrative-wise, so just a superintendent's office, where you have a superintendent that's making a hundred fifty-ish, a business manager, those costs are shared by three communities. If you just look at that, we have to have our own superintendent, our own middle school.
Oh, we'd have our own superintendent?
We would have to have our own superintendent for the school, I mean, so just looking at the business office costs, we would own those completely.
Okay, I got you.
And then you're looking at the other costs that are shared by three communities that we would have to own.
I got you.
But a middle school on busing would look nice.
Put a middle high school on busing.
Middle high school.
Still wouldn't make sense. Cost-wise, it wouldn't make sense.
No, but.
And we have the highest enrollment of all three communities, so.
There is a, there is a group out there, there's a statewide group that's actually advocating through advocacy and approaching legislators to fix the chapter seventy formula.
It's been going on for years.
But we're, we're really.
Got to make things known more fast.
This is the worst it's been, and I was on the school committee for six years, and I just see it drip down. We're getting less and less and less. We're getting punished now for being in a region.
Right. And that's why we're hoping it'll be fixed. You know, maybe someone will. I will say, the meeting I attended on Friday, there were five local legislators there. They all heard the same issues from everybody, that regional schools is a big problem. Again, there's only five, so we need to reach out to, reach out to anyone you know that helps make those decisions.
Locally, our legislative team, it's both, you know, nobody cares about what party you're in. They all work really well together. So, they're good people.
I spoke to, so I did speak to the Northeast Vocational Tech, as Bill had alluded to. So the way that works, just so that you're familiar, we do have six students there now. The, there are, there are nine that have applied for next year. But they have eleven hundred applications for three hundred slots. So they do not know how many students we will have next year. Only students that do not, only students that have applied for a program that Whittier does not carry are allowed to attend. For instance, veterinary. If Whittier does not have that program, they are allowed to attend Northeast Vocational. But if they wanted to go to a culinary class, they cannot, because Whittier offers that. So it's not like we have two completely separate schools. It's, they're specialized based on the programs that they offer. I don't know if the town has any say in having that second school. It was in place, the change from Essex Aggie to Northeast Voc was before I got here. It was in the budget last year. I don't know if any discussions took place. But again, I don't know if you have an option to tell students they cannot attend.
Yeah, what is our option? Like Bill said, and I, I totally agree with him. We certainly want to accommodate the students that are already there. But if there's a mechanism, a legal mechanism for us to, you know, eliminate the arrangement, I would be in favor of that. That's my opinion.
Well, and I think, so there is the same thing, a regional formula for vocational school students. There is a per pupil amount allocated, and that is set by the state. So my feeling is if they didn't attend Northeast, they'd probably attend Whittier in a different program, and it's going to cost us the same. You know, I don't believe one school can charge a per student fee over another when it's the same vocational.
Our children going there, those are, those are in-district students, not choice of students.
Correct.
Denise, do we have to provide transportation for Northeast?
You know, I don't know, but this morning on my drive to work, I actually passed a bus for Northeast. And it was in April, but it caught me as it drove in front of me, that, that's where it was coming from.
You should have chased him down and asked him.
So, so if we said we didn't want to have Northeast, or didn't want to get involved with the Northeast, would that be, the word I'm trying to say, would that, for Whittier, I mean, who's to say we should be with Whittier and not with these guys? So you may have a problem with some parents might say, well, you know, my kid's going to go to Whittier, and the other wants to go over here to the, the Northeast. You guys are being discriminatory to my.
Joe and I will be attending a meeting in April, I believe, or May, to discuss some of the issues at Whittier. One of the issues is, there is no current regional agreement. It's been outdated, and we cannot, can't get it updated. So I'm assuming it's a document like that, that says, yes, we're signing this with you. This is where we want our students to attend. But it's so outdated, and we're trying to encourage them to come to the table and actually discuss this. And we're trying to get the other communities to join in. So this board at some point in the future will be asked to sign a letter to go to the other communities, asking for support to, you know, reengage with Whittier on the same topic.
Right, but.
That being said, I haven't found anything that exists between this community and Northeast Vocational. But I don't know if one existed for Essex Aggie either.
Right.
Or if it was just because it was an agricultural program, you allowed students to go there.
Right. What I'm saying is, are we being discriminatory if we sign up with Whittier and not the other school?
I, I don't know. And that may be why those two offered with the programs that we don't have.
The meeting that Denise is referring to, Betty and Bill, is the Regional Finance Committee, which is composed of one board of selectmen member each town, finance directors, superintendent, and the business manager. We had a very good meeting last week, and we're going to get together again in April, hopefully start moving the needle forward with understanding how to get a good agreement with Whittier.
So the, the folks over at Northeast Voc couldn't give me a solid budget number, but she told me to level fund it, is where she thinks, she thinks hopefully it'll be lower than that based on the new calculation. I have not received anything from Whittier. I have no idea where they are with their budget. But I've gotten no communication from them at all.
That's an unknown for us too.
That is a complete unknown. And as you can see, it's just a minimal increase that I put in there from nine oh seven to nine fifteen. But I don't know at all where we stand with them. So that's really it at this point. Again, if you, you know, take this back, look at it, look over the recommendations. I will scan to all of you, the full budget documents, the goals, mission statements that the departments compiled, so that you can see if you're interested.
Did everybody send you a mission statement? Did they justify their?
No. But a lot did, and those that did were very thorough and put a lot of thought and effort into it. I, I thought it was funny, because the most well-done budget was emergency management, and he has three thousand dollars, I think. He had tabs, he had it color-coded, he really went all out on his budget. But it was nice that, you know, and it's, they feel the same way, you know. No one ever engages to find out what their goals or their mission is as a department. So, you know, some were really excited about putting those things together and presenting them.
It's an opportunity to tell people how it's going.
Did they give you an explanation why they didn't submit?
No. I did get a budget from everyone except for the one department that we've previously spoken about. So those that didn't do a narrative still completed a budget and put together their budget request.
So their budget would be flatlined again from last year to this year?
I actually cut. I actually recommended cutting their budget. They don't spend the amount of money that they request every year in supplies.
So you had already done that before a sixty-four thousand dollar deficit came up?
That was the first thing I did. So again, hopefully some of these unknowns will work through. I know Betty is going to propose an agenda item for next week to discuss. I'm assuming maybe the first one, maybe, maybe that and mine, I don't know. But as we work through this, hopefully we'll close that deficit even more.
So are we going, are you guys going to do this next week when I'm away? Is that what it sounds like?
Well, it's on the, it's on the agenda for the next few meetings.
I'm gone from sixteen to twenty-three.
And Bill, when do you come back? You go the twenty-second, or you go this fifteenth?
I go this Sunday until the twenty-ninth.
Next regular meeting is twenty-third. I'll be here.
So perhaps that first week in April, we can schedule a few meetings.
Bill, will you remember to put together, honestly, put together some questions?
I definitely will. I got it on my paperwork.
Send them to Denise or?
Yep, I got it. I got it right here.
Joe, you'll be back when?
Joe, I'm not, I'm not not passionate for, I want you to understand where I'm coming from.
Oh, I understand.
I'm looking out for the tax people, and I'm just trying to put the, what?
It's a good discussion.
Twenty-ninth.
You won't be back till the twenty-ninth?
Fifteenth to the twenty-ninth.
Till April Fool's Day.
Yeah, exactly. I might not be back there neither. I have a good time.
When, when are you leaving? Sunday?
Sunday, yeah.
What's the date Sunday?
Fifteenth.
You'd like to tell everybody in the camera where you're going? I'm just kidding.
Don't follow me. Don't bring the snow with me. I've had enough of both.
Okay. So read through, if you have questions as you're going through, feel free to call me or email me. But you also, oh, one thing to mention, I did reorganize the budget. So if you look in the left-hand side, most, should I say, all departments had a blanket expense line in previous years. It was just a dollar amount associated with expense. I've broken those out. So the reason why there's nothing appropriate in a lot of these items in fifteen is because those specific line items didn't exist. For instance, under the finance, there was a nineteen thousand dollar office expense line. I've now broken that out to show, we've consolidated postage is one of my things. And then education and then office expense. So you can actually see what makes up those expense lines. It's more relevant when you get into public safety, the fire department, municipal buildings, and highway.
The highway, there's nothing though, right?
Well, they don't really have, they only have like three things. They don't really have much. They don't, it's not like he has office expense.
Oh, I get it.
So.
His major, his major budget you have.
Correct. But you'll see, like, the police department in the past, we gave them just seventy-eight thousand dollars of expenses. There was no backup as to what we were actually giving them. Now you'll see it's broken down into maintenance and firearms and clothing and fees. So we've tried to, I've tried to add much more detail, so people actually know what these numbers represent when they're going to town meeting. So, and I've also rearranged a few things. For instance, the health insurance was listed as an unclassified budget in the past. Well, I put that in with the insurance. So now we have our property and casualty insurance, our health insurance, our life insurance. Just a few things like that I've moved to try and realign with where they really should be falling. So if you have any questions on that, please let me know, and hopefully I'll have updates for you as we go along. Any questions before we?
Does anybody think they'd want to meet him on Thursday?
Yeah. Can I just ask her a question? I know I want to pick this to death, but eliminating the tree warden position, does that need to be put before the town?
No, we're not eliminating the position. The position stands. The position's there. It had a three hundred dollar stipend.
Yep. No, I don't, I mean.
Right, but the position is still there. The only difference is, the tree warden in the past has recommended, has gone around and recommended to the highway what trees to take down. That's still going to stay the same. It's just we're not going to pay for them.
Highway didn't take them down.
They, in the past, it's just been changed over the last few years. They take the majority of them down. So.
I don't know.
So that will.
I know that they've used a company outside, that company that come in and take the trees down, and the tree warden has paid that.
Yep, that's correct.
At any rate, my point, that wasn't even, that wasn't my point. My point was, there will still be a tree warden position, but there will, he will not have any say?
He is the one that makes the recommendations to the highway department what trees to take down.
Which trees to take down?
We have the equipment, we have the men, we have the budget in the highway department.
Okay.
It doesn't make sense to budget in both when they're doing.
So basically, the money is going to be controlled through the highway department from now, from now on out?
Correct, based on the recommendation of the tree ward.
Okay, okay. I just saw if I end up doing well, I'll understand it.
Right. So we're not changing the powers. It's just, instead of hiring a company, you go into the highway department saying, take these trees down. That's the only difference, instead of getting an outside company and paying for it.
But they've had an outside company take them down.
Yep, but not all the time. The highway department has taken down a significant number of trees.
And they don't have the equipment to take them down?
I spoke with Bobby. He said they're more than capable of taking them down.
Okay.
So the budget in the past was only like six thousand, and they've increased it to ten over the last few years. But it's not like a lot of money has been set aside, and he said that his budget can more than handle that.
Okay.
So.
I'd like to ask, have you finished, Denise, something?
Yes.
If, if we could meet, maybe tonight's Monday, we need what, forty-eight hours' notice to post another selectmen, a quick selectmen's meeting? Could you do it on Wednesday, Thursday?
This week?
Mm-hmm.
It can't be Wednesday, because we passed the deadline to post.
Okay. So can we do Thursday?
I think I might have a meeting Thursday night.
You do? Thursday night?
I can let you know.
Friday, you're still here on Friday?
I'm still here on Friday.
You're still here on Friday?
Friday.
Want to do Friday?
Friday, I have a six o'clock appointment.
During the day, Friday?
I'm trying, during the day, I have time. I'm trying to wrap things up before I go away with some clients.
Yeah, I can understand.
If we can do during the day, two, three, four o'clock, let's say.
Three o'clock?
Let's say four o'clock in the afternoon.
Four o'clock?
Four, Bill?
Yeah, that's good.
Four on Friday?
Yep.
Four.
To put, we have to make some decisions on our, well, on the administrative assistance position, how we're going to handle that going forward.
Okay.
And I think we should talk about that, especially since it's going to be a budget item. They're both amenable to that?
Yes, of course.
Is it going to be the new position or the old position?
I'd just like to talk about what we're going to do in the future, because there's no better time to talk about it. As you said, forecasting is very important. And we're in the budget cycle where we appropriate money, and we need to have a plan. And it, by the time, you know, you're both available again, it'll be the end of the month.
Yeah, that's a good point.
You know, and I don't begrudge anybody taking vacation. So with four o'clock on Friday?
Mm-hmm. I'll be here.
Will you post that, Denise?
I will post it.
Okay.
Denise?
Yep.
Maybe you'll have some other information to share with us?
Yeah, anything about the budget, anytime we get together.
Any budget information, especially, you know, vote, other schools that are going to impact our budget and.
You know, the school committee, when we get, when we got into budget season, we, we did meet every week, like five or six.
I'll know tomorrow what the school committee number is, so I'll have a definite on Penticott tomorrow, because they were voting.
If you get information, is it, can you send it to us, like, let's say, Whittier reports?
Yep.
I mean, even if it, you know, the big, the big stuff, you know, Penticott, Whittier.
So I'll just add a general budget item as well.
Or whatever.
It's like ten million dollars between the two of them.
An update on any budget information.
Do you realize that, Ben?
Excuse me?
Ten million dollars of the budget is between Whittier and Penticott, almost.
And our fifteen million dollar budget.
I know, and we'd love to run everything.
So, yeah, if anything comes across the wires on that.
I will.
Yeah. Send it by homing pigeon if you have to.
Yeah.
Do you want to, do you want to have any discussions with the fire chief or myself to make recommendations to the finance board?
On, on Friday?
I'm just, in general.
Would you like to?
Yes, I, I can do ninety minutes if we start at four. So yes, I will, yes, I'd be happy to.
Those highlighted numbers that you gave us.
I think Bill would, I want to make sure. I think Bill would, I want to make sure we have...
What's that?
Talk about, you know, we've got Denise's...
Yep.
We should, we should spend some time on that.
Fire department, and Denise, and the position and the selectmen's office.
Okay.
Okay.
So this will be a posted meeting, open meeting?
Yep, open meeting.
If we get into negotiations, then it has to be, it would be executive session. But I'll post both just to be safe.
Yeah, a good idea.
Okay. Is it ninety minutes, or do you want, can anyone meet at three, in case there's...
Can we meet at three?
In case there's additional time needed?
So I, yeah, I can, so I can go, so I can go till five.
So you get that full two hours in there?
I don't think we have much payroll, so, yeah, I think we'll be fine.
Okay.
I'm just trying to wrap things up before I go away, that's my business. So, yeah, but three is great, even better.
I will schedule that tomorrow.
Add lunch, I'll come in at noon time. So just a funny aside, I ran into Senator Taub the other night. And he says, you know, I haven't come to Groveland and talked to you guys for a while. Well, I think, I'd like to get them out in front of here and grill them on a few items.
Especially now more than ever.
On that, I will bring up one more item on the budget that I forgot to mention. So the veterans' benefits is an item that actually Senator Taub brought up at the meeting on Friday. Currently, it's out of the municipality's hands on benefits that we offer to veterans. So on the budget in the past, we have budgeted, fifty thousand was what we appropriated this year. We're looking at somewhere around eighty-five, ninety thousand that we're going to spend because we've had so many veterans added. I actually got one at three o'clock this afternoon, another sixty-five hundred dollars a year in veterans' benefits. So the number that I'm proposing has to yet again be increased. And that was one of the initiatives that he was talking about, supporting, is trying to look at that and give the municipality some power when it comes to veterans' benefits. Not necessarily to take it away, but we have no say. We just got an email from the state saying this veteran has been added, and then we have to find the money for him. And forty thousand dollars in one budget year for that line item is a huge hit to us. So that's one other item that you could speak to him on.
Well, it may not be a bad idea to have him come in, like Joe said.
Can we have him come in April sixth?
Yeah, I could see if he's available.
Yeah, usually they have...
Before, before town meeting?
Well, he does come to our town meeting, but he usually shows up a little late. Bruce kind of breezes in.
At least he has a conversation before him, though.
But this is a, this is a, you know, serious working session, like, you know, we're concerned about...
Yeah, and there are a few items. One other item that I've been asked about several times but has not reached municipal level yet is the early retirement incentive. So the governor has supported an early retirement incentive at the state level. He's looking to alleviate forty-five hundred positions through attrition. There is been some talk, and again, it's something the senator brought up, whether or not to make that a local option for municipalities to accept and then offer to their employees. It has pros and cons. For us, the initial payout if someone was to retire is their sick buyback that contractually they're obligated to receive. But the savings could be lower salaries that, you know, for replacing these employees and maybe consolidating of services. So that is something else that is potentially coming down the pipeline. And there are a few of those items that right now are only at the state level that needs to get more support if we're going to bring it down to the municipal side. So I do have a list of articles that I would be reaching out to them to support. So I will share it with this group before that.
I don't know how you feel about it, but they work close together.
Lenny?
Maybe we can have, extend the invitation of Representative Mira as well.
Sure.
By then, we should get an update on reimbursements for snow removal, hopefully.
Probably not likely by that point, but we'll see.
You think we'll have it wrapped up by July first?
No. Historically, snow reimbursements don't come until after July.
Right.
But the state knows that, and they allow us to account for that. We have submitted all of our requests. They would do last Friday by five o'clock to the state for all estimates on snow and ice for the four storms, or the four date periods. Currently, the only one that qualifies is the blizzard. We're hoping that the other three will be allowed by the federal, by the president, the federal government. If so, the state's prepared with everybody's number so that they can actually go forward with the proposal.
Hard to believe they wouldn't include the other storms, because it was one on top of the other. The first one was exacerbated, and on and on and on.
Well, the first bullet that we dodged was the funding for homeland security, which incredibly, that's where this money is coming from. Snow removal has come from our homeland security budget.
I thought the other night, he said it looked favorable. He thought they, it looked pretty favorable.
Yeah, he did. We were at a party, and we had asked him about that, and said it looked favorable, but he didn't give any specifics.
He has a lofty position. He is the senior senator for the minority party, so he does get a lot of respect there.
Yep.
Denise, did he say how many people have expressed interest in early retirement in the Commonwealth? Anybody, of people...
Of state employees? Forty-five hundred. That's what they're looking at.
They want forty-five hundred?
Yes.
And if that doesn't happen, will then he reach out to municipalities and ask them if they want to participate?
No, it's really two separate things. So the forty-five hundred state positions would be, and he would save money, again, by not backfilling them. So they're looking to actually eliminate a majority of those positions.
If they do it at the state, they're going to offer us an option to replicate that system?
Not necessarily.
No?
That's what, that's what some of the municipalities are pushing, to get the municipalities a local option to offer that.
A local option, so we don't get forced into it if it's...
Correct, we wouldn't be forced into it. This board would have to agree.
Like when we joined GIC.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Correct. So the last time they had a local, a municipal early retirement was two thousand and two. That it happened at the state, and they did allow municipalities to jump on that bandwagon. And there was a lot of attrition at that point across the board of people who jumped on. The benefit would be five years, so you have to have twenty years of service and be fifty-five years old in order to take the incentive. And they would add five years to either your age or your years of service.
That's very young to be retired, and then you can have another career.
Yep, you could.
If you will.
You want to take a five-minute break to move on?
Yeah.
Can we do that?
You can.
Take a five-minute recess?
Yeah.
Sounds good. My throat's dry.